I'll get in a lot of trouble for that later.
Birthday.
All right, it is nine o'clock and so we will call our meeting to order. And we thank you so much for being able to be here today. We're going to begin this day with some presentations. And I need a, put them on. To be able to do that, if I can get one? Oh, I see, okay. Right, so on our presentations, I'm sorry, we're going to have presentation. Have a purchasing proclamation for them later, which is a little bit, and so go ahead.
And things during a blackout period within the ordinance.
Is there any place where you're almost sort of preempting a local ordinance of any kind?
Not preempting, just being able to use the science and technologies that we have through soil testing and things to put the nutrients back in.
We have a video running underneath that needs to stop.
Last week a second.
Okay. This is a morning of glitches here, we'll get started.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning, good.
Mayor's staff, Joyce Diaz, Risk Management and Department Director. Over the past few years, Risk Management has brought to you our department presentation at the beginning of each March, which is National Procurement Month. Thank you. Each March, we honor all of the dedicated purchasing staff members in government agencies and private business. This year, we're also celebrating National Women's History Month. And here this morning, to enlighten you about the Purchasing Division and how we align with city and community goals, is our most tenured procurement professional, Tara Walls.
Good morning, Mayor, Commissioners and City Staff. I'm Tara Walls, Senior Purchasing Agent, and it is my pleasure to present to you this morning how procurement is aligned with city and community objectives. Purchasing in central stores is a support division in the Risk Management and Purchasing Department, which was established to assist all city departments in the effective procurement of needed goods and services in an organized, timely and economical method. It also serves the public and the community to assure that city business is transacted in a transparent, fair and consistent manner. In order to meet the Purchasing and Stores Division's responsibilities and objectives, it is imperative that we are aligned with city and community objectives. Well-connected procurement functions should support goals and objectives even before key success indicators are published. Objectives should reflect not just a procurement goal, but an organization goal as well. This ensures procurement activity remains relevant and focused on the city's goals and priorities. To stay up to date with city commission and other city departments' goals, staff watches and listens to commission meetings for not only current projects on the agenda, but to learn what new goals are being discussed for the community, such as broadband, green energy and affordable housing issues. Other community projects Purchasing has participated in include logo branding and website development for the Mayor's Council for the Arts and valet services and armed security services for the LDDA. In order to align with community objectives, we meet and interact with local groups and organizations. For example, last year, we partnered with Bridge Local for bridge business community interaction and participation through virtual meetings, providing Purchasing 101 sessions. And we continue to seek input from the local business community on additional topics to present in future meetings. Also, the Well.Lakeland to establish a subcontractor certification program for vendors, suppliers and contractors. This program will increase education, awareness and opportunities for small companies to gain business dollars and experience in working with prime, general contractors and companies on a secondary spend level with local government. With the Central Florida Business Diversity Council, we participate and share information at our regular monthly virtual and/or physical meetings. In addition, we partnered with HB Homes Presents for the Polk County Procurement Workshop in February 2021. And in collaboration with the Lakeland Chamber of Commerce, created a website interface to advertise City of Lakeland bid opportunities with Chamber members. As we move along through the presentation, this cheat sheet can assist with understanding the acronym meanings associated with our sourcing methods used in purchasing. As you can see, RFQ is used for two different methods depending on what is requested. In order to align with city goals, Purchasing supports two of the six established goals that support the city's vision, mission and values. The city goal of fiscal management is to develop and effectively manage financial resources. And our strategy is to continually monitor and evaluate business practices for cost effectiveness and efficiency and maintain financial stability by aligning resources to both municipal services and regulatory requirements resulting with Purchasing's KSI to support this goal and objective. Since the beginning of fiscal year 21, Purchasing has issued a total of 129 sealed bids, RFPs and RFQs. This resulted in a total of over $14 million savings to taxpayers through the competitive sealed bidding process. Since the revised Local Vendor Preference Ordinance was enacted in November 2020 and subsequently again this past January, we have awarded four sealed bids totaling $2,366,130, which is a total difference from the low bids of $49,154. Likewise, the city goal of governance provides for responsive and responsible governmental service. And our strategy is to provide services required by federal, state and local laws or policies or which meet an accreditation or industry standard and utilize best practices for timely decisions, transparency and fiscally accountable governments, resulting with Purchasing's KSI to support this goal and objective. For processing sealed bids and RFPs, we calculate the number of days from when we receive a department request for bid until when bids are received. Best practice is 30 days, and since the beginning of fiscal year 21, our average has been 30 days. During this time, we processed 129 bids, RFPs and RFQs. Our administrative support staff assists vendors when they contact the purchasing office with I supplier registration, obtaining bid documents, attending public bid openings or needing confirmation of purchase order delivery. Support staff plays a pivotal role in the customer service that we provide to our vendors and other city departments. In order for other city departments to meet their goals, Purchasing supports them through central stores and power plant warehouse stock replenishment, as well as competitive bidding via formal sealed bids, RFPs and RFQs. Central Stores purchases storm stock to prepare for hurricane season. This is typically done in March, but due to ongoing global supply chain issues, lead times have doubled and tripled in most cases, so we processed 21 purchase orders in January this year. Central Stores is an integral part of the procurement function. Our goal is to efficiently control purchased goods for city departments to meet their goals by providing goods for distribution in a timely and cost-effective manner. Power plant purchasing helps keep the power on and the city energized. There were 18 Local Vendor Preference Awards for requests for quotes for fiscal year 21 to present compared to four orders awarded in fiscal year 20, an increase of 78% since the ordinance was revised. Here are some projects that you may be familiar with. This request for proposal is for a restaurant operator at Lakeland-Lender International Airport. This project was approved last year and is currently underway. This request for qualifications is for exhibit design, fabrication and installation services for the Lakeland History and Culture Center, which was approved last year and is close to completion. The new Bridgewater Substation project is still underway. The 69 KV Transmission Side was energized on February 24th, 2022, and the Distribution Side will be energized at a later date. This request for proposal for the rice generators was approved last year and is currently in progress. There will be approximately 23 additional bids and quotes issued to complete all areas of this large project. This request for proposal for the redevelopment of the Oak Street Parking Lot was approved last year and is currently in the contract negotiation phase. With the collective 126 years of purchasing experience, our staff of six supports all city departments while also maintaining relationships with community groups and organizations. Let me show you who those six are. From left to right, Todd Glidewell, myself Tara Walls, Linda Allspa, Patty Nichols, Philip Shuley and Mark Rayford. The support that Purchasing provides to all city departments comes in a small package with lots of experience, poise and wittiness when needed. In 1988, this house was the home of the Purchasing Division offices, which used to be to the east of the current Central Stores campus that you can see on the left side in this picture. And this is where we are today. As the saying goes, we've come a long way, baby. We will stand for any questions that you might have.
Well, I'm sure we have some comments on this, but that's a wonderful report and fabulous work. And I think it's easy for us as citizens not to recognize how important that both those savings are, but the quality of alignments in terms of the ability to deliver the services and product become as well. Any other, Commissioner comments? Loved seeing the local preference numbers, that was excellent. And a great picture of how well that policy has worked and the gain locally as a very small amount of cost. Was it 43,000 in aggregate? 48,000?
Yeah, 49.
49,000 in aggregate. And 2,300,000 in terms of work and services bid locally, so that's excellent. You all do an outstanding job. Commissioner Madden?
Thank you, Mayor. I did just want to say also, it was fun to see the presentation of using kind of the strategic plan as the umbrella and then your KSI is underneath. And I know that that was a big challenge during COVID to have those meetings, you know, with our stakeholders to make sure that they felt like they knew about the process. So even during COVID, to be able to come up with those virtual events with Bridge Local and with the Chamber and the others that were on that slide, I just really appreciate that, so thank you.
And thank you for your service, and we'll do more of that later.
Mr. Mayor. If I may, I just want to take a moment to recognize the team for being here this morning and our director Joyce Diaz. And I want to thank her for assigning that presentation to Tara, so that we get to see from other staff members. And I want to share with the public that, you know, everyone knows I'm the biggest Bucks fan in the world. I mean, there's just no bigger Bucks fan than I am, but if there is a second, it's Tara. What you may not realize, but on Sundays, when you're watching the Bucks game on TV and from time to time, you'll see some people waving the big, large Buccaneer flags. Well, many times that's actually Tara. She has volunteered so much over at the Bucks Stadium that she's actually considered a part-time employee over there. And she's in the games on Sunday cheering on and waving the flags for the Bucks. So just a little personal note to Tara, and Tara, great job and go Bucks.
Probably was one of the reasons Tom Brady was willing to come. All right, we are now going to go to beautification awards. It's Bill Cohen's going to present both a residential and a commercial as well.
Well, first up, we're going to have the residential award for the month of March. And it goes to John and Mindy Allen, who reside at 914 Success Avenue. You can see this beautiful craftsman style home here that was built in 1925. The landscaping itself really accentuates the architecture of the time with the topiaries, the boxwood hedges and the azaleas in bloom. So it's a great house right in the heart of the historical district. And John and Mindy sent a message that they really appreciate the award, but they will not be able to attend today. So I don't think there's anyone here to accept this award today.
Just in case they reneg.
So I'll make sure that they get a copy of this. And really a beautiful house, very representative of that time period in Lakeland, so. Okay, so we can go to the next one here. This is going to be the Banyan Reserve Senior Living Center, 940 Serenity Hills Drive. This is out off Providence Road. It's just a tremendous project here. I remember inspecting this landscape back in two years ago or whatever, and they put on all the proper trees, landscaping, shrubbery. And I drove back through there just a couple of weeks ago, and I couldn't even find a weed on the property. They were doing such a great job of retaining it. There's lots of amenities to this place to live here. They have a dog park, swimming pool, exercise facilities. So it's just a fabulous asset to our community. And I believe there may be someone here to receive this award.
Jeff Kness is here.
We have several people here actually, so.
If you've not been out to see this property. If you've not been out to see this property, it is just beautifully done and amazingly taken care of, always clean. And the residents love living there, so all those are great things. So I'm going to put you in the middle and I'll get on the end. Would anyone like to make a comment?
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you Commissioners and City Staff. My name is Jeff Kiss, I'm a partner at Banning Development Group. And we're very proud of our support from the city that we got to make this a reality for 55 and older residents. And we're really hoping to do another one if we can, find the right site. But we're very proud of this. Please come by if you haven't seen the property. Our management team, AGPM, what stands for Agreen Property Manager, they're the keys to keeping this facility, this community spotless and green. And, you know, we look forward to working with the city again in the future. But thank you very much for the award.
All right, next we are going to have a presentation on these by Dustin Plemons, our Green Superintendent at the Heights. And I think you're going to be fascinated by that, so.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
If I may, I'll take this one. And Dustin, if you would come forward and if you don't mind, just you could stand there at the podium, please Dustin. But to recognize Dustin, I want to start with talking and updating the community and the commission about the success that we've been experiencing at Cleveland Heights Golf Course of late. The month of February was a very busy month at the golf course. We hosted the Sister Cities and Mayor's Golf Tournament and four other tournaments during the month of February. The Second Annual Carson Nance Memorial Golf Tournament that we hosted on February 19th raised $75,000 for scholarships and programming at the first tee of Central Florida. Just from the four ball tournament and the Carson Nance Tournament, over $150,000 of charity was raised at the golf course in the month of February. Annually, there's over $350,000 of charity raised through the golf course. In terms of the performance of the golf course recently, we'll just talk about the month of February. When you compare February over the previous year, golf rounds played was up 2,211 rounds. And total sales for the month of February over last year is up by $58,000. Total sales for the year is up $185,000. And total golf rounds for the year is up 7,243 rounds. So as you have all seen, the golf course is in tremendous shape. And that is because of all of the work that our professional staff out at the golf course is responsible for. And that certainly includes Brock Whitmire, our manager who was with us today. But then the entire staff out there from Parks and Recreation does a phenomenal job. But I wanted to take a moment to spotlight one particular employee, Mr. Dustin Plemons, who has really gone above and beyond even his requirements of his job as of late. Dustin Plemons is our superintendent and has been since 2012. Dustin is the President of the Ridge Golf Course Superintendent Association. He is a Florida Golf Course Superintendent Association Board Member, and he participates on five different subcommittees. He is also a Golf Course Superintendent Association of America Grassroots Ambassador. Now recently, Dustin has gone up to Tallahassee on two occasions, going far outside of the expectations of his position here with the city. On one of those trips, he met with our governor. And on another one of those trips, he actually gave testimony before a legislative committee regarding golf course best management practices. And on that day, I want to share with you, Dustin started his morning at the golf course and worked a few hours at the golf course before he then got in a vehicle and drove to Tallahassee. He met with legislators while he was in Tallahassee. He testified before that legislative committee. I believe he then had a dinner before he got back in his vehicle and drove all the way back to Lakeland, all in one day. When I was in Tallahassee for Polk County Day, I had several legislators and staff up there that commented on how valuable it was to have Dustin Plemons there to present. And so with that, I'm going to ask Kevin Cook, who has a clip of.
I've been a BMP certified since 2007, just recertified last year with UF and IFAS. For your question, for the ordinances, we would follow all local ordinances, noise, water, soil testing. All this would do was give us permission to use our BMPs to fertilize and things during a blackout period within the ordinance.
Is there any place where you're almost sort of preempting a local ordinance of any kind?
Not preempting, just being able to use the science and technologies that we have through soil testing and things to put the nutrients back into the plant that the plant needs.
I'll tag on that unsolicited, the last couple of times I have been out to the Heights, I have had golfers say to me, the condition of this course, considering the fact that we have more players playing on it, is some of the best they ever remember. So with that, you can begin your presentation, that's enough lauding.
Dustin doesn't have a presentation today. I just wanted to bring him forward and recognize him for all of the hard work that he's been doing. And as I've mentioned, there's no question that without people like Dustin and Brock and all of our Parks and Rec employees star employees and thank him for all of that work that he's. Commissioner Reed, did you?
Thank you, yeah. I've known his mom and dad since forever, and I think since he was about that high. And I know he's a local Lakeland guy, and that's really a compliment that he's made it this far and hope you stick around for a while.
And so with that, Commissioners, if you would and the audience would just join me and thank you Dustin for all.
Mr. Mayor, if I could please? Thank you, Mr. City Manager. I think we need to make sure we understand too that this just didn't happen. It was many years, because there were some years, you know, during my tenure here where there was some subjects, matters about the golf course, whether we wanted to keep it, let it go, what are we going to do? But, you know, thank God, you know, we did what we thought was best and keep it for the citizens here in our city who do golf and make it what it is and has become today. So I think we should not forget this past history of where we had some challenges, but how even with the challenges, we did what needed to be done as a commission, as city staff, to make sure we made a turnaround to get the golf course to where it is today. And so thank you as well, sir, but all those who played part in those years of where it was really some trying moments, but we got through it, and here we are today to give these accolades. Thank God for that.
Thank you, yes, sir.
Just a question, thank you Dustin, and that's impressive what you've done and that you went up to Tallahassee and testified before the legislature and that expertise that you brought to that discussion. I'm just curious about the increase in rounds that we're seeing, the more people coming out to the Heights. And do you attribute that to increase in popularity of the sport of golf? Or the conditions are better and so compared to other courses in town, they were just more attractive? What would you attribute that to?
It's probably all the above. Golf course is a lot better than when I started in 2012. Still got a long way to go in my opinion. But you've got more people moving here. It's affordable public golf course, you've got some courses that are closing. But we're averaging probably close to 300 rounds a day right now. It's hard for maintenance to get out and do anything right now, which is a good problem to have. So that's why we start at 5:00 AM. So, but I think it's all the above.
Thank you.
Any other comments? Well, this is just a round of applause.
Mr. Mayor, just in conclusion, I want to tell you Dustin is absolutely a scientist when it comes to turf management. He's a scientist, he's a hard worker and just an all-around great guy. So thank you Dustin, and I think we're going to get a photo so that we can post that on the city's Facebook page.
Okay, well, this is fun. All right, we have some proclamations. As you may know, the last couple of meetings, we haven't had any, and so we'll catch up today. Our first one is American Red Cross Month. And here to receive that proclamation is Team Student, the Executive Director David Cruz and Ryan Buckley, board members of the Mid-Florida Chapter of American Red Cross. If you are in the room and you can come up, I will, there you go. I will read this and then you can make some comments here finished. And I'll remember to bring my mic with me. All right. Whereas during crisis, people of Lakeland come together and care for one another. And this humanitarian spirit is foundational within our community and is exemplified by American Red Cross through its volunteers and donors. And whereas in 1881 Clara Barton founded the American Red Cross, turning her steadfast dedication of serving others into a bold mission of preventing and alleviating people's suffering. Today, more than 140 years later, we continue to honor the kindness and generosity of Red Cross volunteers in Lakeland as they continue to carry out Clara's life-saving legacy. Those people join the millions of people across the United States who volunteer, give blood, donate financially, or learn vital life-preserving skills through the Red Cross. And whereas in Lakeland, the contributions of local Red Cross volunteers gives hope to the most vulnerable during their darkest hour, whether it's providing emergency shelter, food and comfort for families devastated by local disasters like home fires, supporting service members and veterans along with their families and caregivers through the unique challenges of military life, helping to save the lives of others with first aid, CPR and other skills, or delivering international humanitarian aid in 2021. Red Cross volunteers assisted 225 individuals and 90 families who experienced a home fire. And whereas their work to prevent and alleviate human suffering is vital to strengthening our community's resilience, we dedicate this month of March to all those who continue to advance the noble legacy of American Red Cross founder Clara Barton, who lived by her words, "You must never think of anything except the need and how to meet it." We ask others to join in this commitment of giving back to our community. And therefore, I have signed this proclamation for the American Red Cross Month in March in the City of Lakeland and signed and witnessed. First of all, let me shake your hand for that and hand this to you. And then, do you have any comments?
Thanks. Good morning, my name's Tina Sweetin, and I'm the Executive Director of the Mid-Florida Chapter of the American Red Cross. And we serve Polk, Pasco, Hernando, Citrus, Lake and Sumter Counties, so a big area. But we reside here in Polk County, and we do have lots of great volunteers here that serve with us. serve with us. And like the mayor read, we helped 225 individuals last year with home fires. So Polk County has one of the highest rates of home fires, which is not good, but we're there no matter what time of day. So I just wanted to say, if you're interested in volunteering, let us know. We can always use more volunteers, but thank you so much for this proclamation today.
Thank you. Appreciate it. David, thank you for being up here as well. We'll take a picture.
Okay. Oh, yeah. That would be a good idea, right?
All right, perfect. Three, two, one. One more. Three, two, one. Perfect.
Mr. Mayor-
Yes, sir.
If I may again, I just wanted to recognize the gentleman that was just on stage, David Cuss. He is one of our three Assistant General Managers at Lakeland Electric. David is scheduled to retire coming up here in April, and he's done a tremendous job for the city. And certainly when we talk about the city's values, it starts with social responsibility, and through David's efforts, he's been a tremendous example to all of the city staff. So David, thank you.
All right, next, we're going to have, and I think you're going to find this one interesting, Irish-American Heritage Month in 2022. And here to receive the proclamation is Greg Shawn Canning of the Ancient Order of Hybernians. Is that good? Is that right? Hybernians, Florida State Secretary. So are you here, Greg? I do not see Greg, so I'm going to read this to you anyway, because you may not know this about our heritage. And Greg was to have been here, but that's fine. Whereas by 1776, nearly 300,000 Irish nationals had emigrated to the American colonies and played a crucial in America's war for independence. And whereas five signers of the Declaration of Independence were of Irish descent, and three signers were Irish-born. And whereas Irish-Americans helped fashion a system of government for our young nation, and 22 presidents have probably proclaimed their Irish heritage. Whereas in 1792, Irish-born James Hoban provided the architectural plans for the White House and served as one of the supervising architects for the construction of the Capitol. And whereas Irish-born Commodore John Barry was ultimately recognized by the United States Congress in September of 2002 as being the first flag officer of the United States Navy. And Commodore John Barry fought the last sea battle of the American Revolution off the coast of Florida in 1813. Captain Oliver Perry, an Irish-American, achieved a major naval victory in the Battle of Erie in 1942, and five Sullivan brothers made the ultimate sacrifice for democracy and freedom during the Naval Battle of Guadalcanal by and later had the destroyer USS Sullivan commissioned in their memory. And whereas the Irish first came to Spanish La Florida in the 1500s, first as missionaries and mercenary soldiers, and then as planters, traders, businessmen, doctors, and administrators. And whereas by 1776, nearly 300,000 Irish nationals had emigrated to the American colonies and played a crucial role in America's war for independence, and the five signers of the Declaration of Independence were of Irish descent, and those three signers were Irish-born, and three of the Spanish governors of La Florida were actually Irish military officers, we declared March to be Irish-American Heritage Month in the City of Lakeland. That was interesting history to me. If you ever go to Ireland, they will talk about being the distant cousins of the English, that the English have kind of always exploited them a little bit and taken their trees and whatever, but they still love their English cousins, you know, as they get along. But they're a jolly people, and they've also been people that have had a rich part of our heritage. So it was fun to go ahead and read those facts, even in Greg's absence, and I'll make sure he gets a- All right. And you were hoping maybe I would just skip past that, weren't you, deep down? Okay. Our third one is Meals on Wheels Community Champions Week 2022. And here to receive the proclamation is Susan Eldridge, the Executive Director for Meals on Wheels. So come on up, Susan, and we're so glad you've done this work, and this too is fascinating. This is the learning portion of our meeting.
Okay.
Whereas the annual March for Meals celebration commemorates its historic starting date of March 22nd, 1972, when President Richard Nixon signed into law a measure that amended the Older Americans Act of 1965 to include a national nutrition program for seniors 60 years and older. And whereas Polk County has served our communities admirably for 50 years with Meals on Wheels programs, providing both congregate and home delivery services while raising awareness about the escalating problems of senior hunger in America, which continue. Whereas these challenges have been exacerbated during COVID-19 pandemic and thrust senior nutrition programs to the front lines. And whereas this year is Meals on Wheels programs uniting across the country to celebrate 50 years of success and garner their support needed to ensure these critical programs continue to address the food insecurity and malnutrition, combat social isolation, enable independence, and improve health for years to come. And whereas volunteers for Meals on Wheels program in Polk County are the backbone of the program as they deliver nutritious meals to seniors, and whereas with disabilities and providing caring concern for their welfare. And whereas Meals on Wheels programs in Polk County deserve recognition for their heroic contributions and essential services provided during the COVID-19 pandemic and will continue to provide these services to local communities, our state, and our nation long after it is over as they live out the mission motto, nourishing and enriching the lives of our homebound. I therefore declare Meals on Wheels Community Champions Week in the City of Lakeland. And could you make some comments?
Yes, thank you. Thank you all for recognizing Meals on Wheels. It is our Meals on Wheels of Polk County. It's our 50th year as well, and we are proud, proud to be a part of the Lakeland community as much as the other cities that we do serve. That first, this is interesting to me, our history, the first day that they delivered meals, they delivered 15 meals. So the last year, we delivered 105,000 meals to Polk County. That's a lot. That's a lot of growth during that time. The Community Champions Week is March 21st through the 25th, and we invite all community leaders to come, either ride along with one of our board members on a route to deliver meals, or come to our kitchen and help prepare, or just watch how we package. Just a way to help spread the word. You could let others know we need volunteers and donations from the area. If you can't come that week, you are welcome anytime during the year. So thank you.
Thank you very much. And let's take a picture, and you can hold that.
Three, two, one.
All right, thank you, sir. Next, we will have the Melanin Families Matter Month 2022, and here to receive the proclamation is Rosalyn Smith, the Program Manager for Healthy Start. Rosalyn, are you here? Yes, come on up. Can't be shy about this. And who you have brought with you, I apologize for not knowing. And let me go ahead and read the proclamation if I could. Whereas African-American women have pregnancy-related deaths that are preventable, yet they are still three to four times more likely to die during pregnancy or postpartum compared to white women. And whereas black babies are two times more likely to die in Polk County communities before their first birthday than white babies. And whereas per 1,000 births, the 2017 to 2019 black maternal death rate in Polk County was three times more likely than white maternal death rate. And whereas the Polk County infant death, 0 to 364 days, rate is a result of one or more of seven social determinants of health. And whereas local and national agencies such as Melanin Families Matter, Healthy Start, Healthy Families, NAACP, Florida Department of Health in Polk County, Lakeland Regional Health, Spirit Life Ministries, and other partnering agencies chose to educate and advocate on behalf of African-American families to provide resources and education to Polk County residents. And whereas the City of Lakeland City Commission recognizes that reducing the maternal and infant mortality rate among African-American families is a public health issue in Lakeland and across Polk County, and together we can help save lives, close the disparity gap, and promote access to fair and equal health treatment for African-American mothers and babies in Polk County by providing resources and education. Now therefore, IH William Muttz, as Mayor of the City of Lakeland, do hereby proclaim March 2022 as Melanin Families Matter Month in the City of Lakeland. And so here is that proclamation. Comments?
Yes, thank you. I just wanted to say that we have a wonderful group of community partners that are working to decrease the social determinants of health for all communities in Polk County, especially our black moms and black babies. So we thank you very much for recognizing March as Melanin Family Matters Month.
All right. So here is that proclamation. I'll put this down.
Three, two, one. All right, perfect.
Next, we'll have a National Bleeding Disorder Awareness Month for 2022, and here to receive the proclamation is Fran Haynes, Executive Director for the Hemophilia Foundation of Greater Florida, and Tasha Gibson, volunteer did Tasha. And Tasha couldn't be here but in her heart, I'm sure.
Yes.
She's very close. Okay. Let me get that out. Whereas hemophilia is a rare genetic disorder that prevents blood from clotting properly due to the lack of sufficient proteins and leads to symptoms such as excessive bleeding, deep bruising, joint pain, muscle weakness, and frequent nosebleeds. And whereas if you have hemophilia, you may bleed for a longer time after an injury than you would if your blood clotted normally, causing weakness of the voluntary muscles. And whereas most people that suffer from hemophilia in the United States are diagnosed at a young age, 36 months for mild cases, eight months for moderate cases, and one month for severe cases. And whereas the Bleeding Disorders Coalition of Florida is an advocacy organization founded by the Hemophilia Foundation of Greater Florida and the Florida Hemophilia Association that serves and serves as the voice of the Florida Bleeding Disorder community. And whereas the Bleeding Disorders Coalition of Florida have been serving the Bleeding Disorders community to improve their quality of life by offering programs and services such as a medically-supervised camp, scholarships, advocacy efforts, emergency financial system, and educational programs to help support healthier and more independent lives. Now therefore, IH William Muttz, as Mayor of the City of Lakeland, do hereby proclaim March 2022 as National Bleeding Disorder Awareness Month in the City of Lakeland.
Thank you.
Thank you. And let me shake your hand first.
Thank you so much.
And it does, it's a game changer. I remember as a child having a friend who had hemophilia, who had hemophilia, who would not want to practice and play in some of the events that we would do because he was worried about that.
Life has changed. Thank you so much for recognizing National Bleeding Disorder Awareness Month. We serve the state of Florida, and we do serve, we have quite a few patients here in Lakeland and Polk County, and we are very grateful for the support. And if you're interested in learning more about us, please go to our website at www.hemophiliaflorida.org, where you can find out how to donate and how to volunteer. And again, thank you for your support.
Thank you for being here.
Yes, my pleasure. It's exciting.
Three, two, one. Perfect.
Thank you.
And sadly, our last proclamation, last but not least by any means, we are going to do for the Purchasing Month. And so Joyce Diaz, Antara Walls, and Mark, well, the whole team, come on up. All six of you that were in the window, that would be in the picture, you know, that we saw, are here to receive the, are going to be here to receive this proclamation. So let me, once you get up here, read this to you, and then I'll hand it to you. By the way, great job on that presentation. Just the 10,000 units that you keep in stock to keep our electrical system working when things go out, that's why we get ourselves back up right away. You know, when our LE crew went to help in Puerto Rico, one of the big problems was there wasn't anything to fix. There weren't parts, there weren't lines, there was no material, and they couldn't. So even though they had the people in place, it didn't matter if you don't have the items. And so you guys do a great job of getting that done. Just a little plug. So all of us who turned our lights on this morning are grateful to you as well. Whereas the public procurement profession plays a significant role in the efficiency and effectiveness of both government and businesses. And whereas in addition to the purchase of goods and services, procurement adds value to the organization by performing functions such as executing, implementing, and administering contracts, developing strategic procurement strategies, and cultivating working relationships with suppliers and other departments within the organization. And whereas public procurement professionals in the City of Lakeland, Purchasing and Stores Division, and other public and private organizations have tremendous influence on the economic conditions in the United States with a cumulative purchasing power running into the billions of dollars. And whereas the Purchasing and Stores Division in the City of Lakeland is committed to provide high-caliber strategic logistical and operational support of all departments within the city, electrical just being one of them. And whereas the Purchasing and Stores Division in the City of Lakeland recognizes, supports, and practices the public procurement values and guiding principles of accountability, ethics, impartiality, professionalism, service, and transparency established by NIGP, the Institute for Public Procurement, as fundamental tenants of the public procurement profession. And whereas the City of Lakeland Purchasing and Stores Division and other professional purchasing associations throughout the world engage in special efforts during the month of March to inform the public about the importance of their role played by the procurement professionals in business, industry, and government. Now therefore, IH William Muttz, Mayor of the City of Lakeland, do hereby proclaim March 2022 as Purchasing Month in the City of Lakeland and signed therein. So let me give this to you, Joyce. Where are you? There you are. To hold. And any comments you'd like to make?
I'm sure Mark will.
Mark, obviously. Joyce and me.
Thank you. On behalf of Joyce and our staff, and that's here present, our central source staff who's busy taking care of the crews and the other city departments back at the shop, we just want to offer our thanks, Mr. Mayor, City Commission, City Manager's Office, City Attorney's Office, Finance Department.
Let me go around.
Because we might buy the stuff, but he pays for it. And all of our city departments in support and help in helping us achieve our goals and our successes. Thank you very, very much.
It is a privilege for all of us to work with you. Let's give them a round of applause. We're going to tighten up really closely here.
All right, ready? Three, two, one. All right, perfect.
That turned on. That brings us then to approval of the Consent Agenda, because we have no committee reports or related items.
Move for approval.
Motion to approve and second, and that consent agenda includes our minutes and the other asterisk items on the agenda. Discussion by commissioners? Any discussion or questions by the audience? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same, unanimously passes. We will cease to meet then, oh, I'm sorry, excuse me. Then we have our request appear from the general public, and Tom Phillips, who's waited patiently to speak and learned all along the way, and does a fabulous job at leading at Citrus Connection, is going to give us a report.
Well, Mr. Mayor, it's so exciting to see all these people here for the public transit issue. I'm excited about that. I'm sure they're here for this. So I will be brief today. Thank you. My name is Tom Phillips, and I'm the Executive Director of the Lakeland Area Mass Transit District. At the unanimous request of our board, I'm here today to seek an exemption to the tax increment funding paid to the midtown, downtown, and Dixieland CRAs. As you know, the Lakeland Area Mass Transit District operates within these CRAs, and as a taxing government agency, we are subject to the increment and obligation of the CRAs. In just the last eight years, $1.7 million has been forwarded by the Lakeland Area Mass Transit District to the combined CRAs. During the same eight-year period, our transfer increment has increased 128% to approximately $324,000. For this budget year, $324,000 represents almost 6% of our total ad valorem revenues. Three years ago, I came before you to request that you exercise your authority to exempt the Lakeland Area Mass Transit District from transferring the CRA increment payment. Our request was denied in favor of an inter-agency agreement that returned a portion of the payment to us in return for seven runs along- to us in return for seven runs along the Lakeland Hills Boulevard Corridor Bus, also known as the Medical Corridor. The Medical Corridor is our second highest ridership. Regardless of the source of these funds, these seven runs would certainly continue today. Under the agreement, the balance of the Lakeland Area Mass Transit District increment payment would remain with the CRA to be spent as they see fit. Over time, the Lakeland Area Mass Transit District payment will continue to grow. In closing, I offer the following thoughts in support of our board's request. Number one, please leave those limited mass transit dollars in the hands of those solely responsible in providing quality dependable mass transit. Number two, you have our audited assurances that these dollars will follow demand and be sent, spent exclusively in the voter-approved Lakeland Area Mass Transit District. Number three, finally, and most importantly, we ask that you honor the will of the voters who by referendum imposed this modex tax upon themselves. They deserve that all the funds generated stay with the district that they created. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you very much, Mr. Phillips, and Commissioner McCarley.
I move to exempt the transit authority from the CRA mileage.
So there's a motion and a second to exempt it? And is that an action we should take now? Can't take now?
You can't take that now.
Okay. Discussion by commissioners. Commissioner Reed.
Thank you. There again, in lieu of gas prices and stuff, I think it's imperative that we assist our, our citizens who ride the bus. Of course, we know we're always complaining about traffic, and this is necessity to alleviate some of that issue that we're experiencing. And so I heartily endorse what you're doing here, Tom, but thank you very much.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
I said I wasn't going to say anything, but I guess I will. Going to sit still long enough. But certainly appreciate, you know, I think, the request again, Mr. Phillips, because it has proven, you know, of course, what the trike record, I believe that we have had and seen with Citrus Connection. I've been on the board now, I guess, about six, seven years, maybe more, maybe eight, I think.
Eight sounds right.
So I've seen that, you know, that what has happened, and I think is important, as a current Chair of the Board, who sits here, of course, as my fellow Commissioner, knows that, you know, transit, if we're going to make sure that we get their, I think, the purpose of what it's all about, how to make sure our citizens get around, you know, it's, it's important, because we are a growing community, we have many miles, I think it's important to have, so I will be supporting it.
Commissioner Music.
Can I get some background on the original vote? I don't know enough about this topic and would like some, some information on the, the original referendum. We did, I did have someone come up and give me some information last week, and obviously if we're, money was voted to go somewhere, and I was told that it's kind of not going there, but if we are taking money that was allocated where it shouldn't, obviously that needs to be corrected. But then if it's currently going to the CRA and that comes out, what is, what are we talking about budget-wise? I'd like some info on that, please.
Okay, so, and I'm going to ask Elise Drumgo to come up as a part of this and make a portion of this presentation, because I do want to caution us on this. We give the money eventually back to the transit authority completely.
Yes.
The concern that the CRA has had is that if we do it upfront and don't have the ability to be able to meter some of that, to hold back some of that, that we would lose some of the ability to make certain that desires that the CRA want to have on transportation occur. So if, Elise, could you speak to that?
Good morning, for the record, Elise Drumgo, Assistant Director, Community and Economic Development, also your CRA manager. The mayor stated correctly that the way the, the funding works for the CRA, we have the three taxing authorities. It's the city, the county, and the Mass Transit District. And that's the way it was set up when the districts were created. Well, all the mass transit funds don't necessarily go to the CRA, it's just the increase of values since the CRA was created. And, you know, I just want to remind you that the redevelopment areas were created because of blight, a lack of infrastructure, and a lack of services. And so those funds that the district pays, it's because of the, the negligence or the, the opportunities that were not there before the CRA was created. And so now when you create the CRA, you have these funds going into the district, you all, as the CRA, as that body, are able to guide those funds specifically where you would like to see them spent. Currently, we send $181,000 back to the district in order to operate the bus services along the Medical Corridor route. The difference, so the delta between those funds now is at $320,000, or, excuse me, is at about $140,000, $150,000. And so I understand, you know, the Tom's assertion, or just his comments about wanting those dollars to go where the taxpayers would like to see them go. Well, you know, you all are here, you're elected by the taxpayers as well. And in this case, where those funds are necessary to help the community go forward and operate, there is a guarantee that the Mass Transit District has to negotiate with us, they must sit with us because of the interlocal agreement, to discuss other services, not just this corridor along the, this corridor and the services along this particular route. We, we've talked a little bit with the Mass Transit District about sending back some additional dollars to cover the cost of increases of service and potentially build in a level of increase over the life of a successor interlocal agreement, should we get the opportunity to negotiate that. But I will, you know, just say that the redevelopment area is set up so that you can help the communities that have not been served historically and those that have been neglected, okay? And so transit is a part of the lifestyle of those, those residents, it's a part of the services that are necessary. And for the CRA, we'd love to be able to negotiate additional services. How else can we leverage those dollars? And that's what we do. There is no misappropriation of that funding. If we're not sending the difference in increment back to the mass, the mass transit district, we're doing sidewalk projects. You know, we ju, we were able to recently engage in a study to rebuild the Providence, the Providence Road Corridor, where your CRA leveraged $600,000 study and design services to be able to pull that and, and then additionally move that forward so that FDOT could engage in a $5 million project. And that's along the corridor where there are transit stops and ditches. So I just want to encourage you to consider the request today and understand that we are, we are pro-transit, we are, we are pro-services for those residents, but the redevelopment area, it's important to have those funds go specifically to those communities. And there's no guarantee that the Mass Transit District, but for Mr. Phillips' presence and his commitment, which, you know, I'm a, I'm a fan, and I would take him at his word, but we won't, we may not always have a Tom Phillips.
Commissioner McCarley.
Just some comments. Thank you, Elise, thank you, Tom. So as the Transit Chair right now, I want to clarify for the public and for my peers up here that we are overseeing as a board for the Transit Authority, it's very similar to the authority that is here for the City Commission. So Mayor Mutt, myself, and Commissioner Walker, along with two county commissioners oversee all the budgets, and we approve every lug nut that goes on a bus, every Wi-Fi service, everything that goes on a bus comes before elected officials who represent the people, just like this is coming towards us as a city commission. Now, what I think is important about the CRA, and my question as a Transit Chair and as a member of the Transit Authority, was why, for the taxpayer shows in 1982, and I'll give you some history too, Polk County decided as an entity in 1916 that they would tax themselves to build roads. So the general public back in 1916 said, we're going to tax ourselves, they generated $1.5 million to build all two, 217 miles of roads throughout the county. I don't know if y'all know that, but that's why we joke about Polk County being the center of the universe and why all roads lead to Polk County, because that was the largest expenditure in the southeast at the time. Well, fast forward to 1982, and the CRA pre-exist the Transit Authority, so CRA, I think, to my knowledge, began in 1977. In 1982, again, there was a referendum, and the community decided that they would have a transit authority, and that that money should go strictly into transit. Whereas I hear that Mr. Drumgo, I, I hear his concerns that we won't always have Tom Phillips, which is a concern whether, I would not like to see you or Tom Phillips go anywhere forever and ever in perpetuity, because I believe you both do a great job. But that Medical Corridor that maybe was generated to begin with with CRA funding is our highest ridership that we have in our Transit Authority right now. That is not going away. But what we also see concurrently is with our growth in this area, we have to have a robust transit system. And when our dollars are allocated strictly to the CRA areas and that increment's going up, so it started several years ago in very small amounts of money, we're now to exceed $350,000 that we pay into the transit, into the CRA. I have a concern as a taxpayer that the money I deemed to go into the Lam-Ted or the Citrus Connection coffers gets retrofitted back into CRA. Even if CRA returns it, there's a cost to the taxpayer just strictly in the budgeting and the processing of the money. So it's costing us money to put it in CRA and then take it back out of CRA, because that might get covered in some kind of management expense, but there's still a cost when we deemed as a society and a group that we want a transit authority. So for me, it's kind of, it's not to take away from CRA. CRA is a viable, wonderful piece of our community that takes care of specific areas around Lakeland. But I find it hard, when I'm sitting in our transit meetings, to determine a really high-end shelter or something, because we have to spend that money in the CRA area that is going to blight another area where we might have more riders in a growing area like Southwest Lakeland, you know, where we have Riverstone. And so we ask developers to build in that infrastructure, but we also want to continue to take care of those riders. So for me, it's very clear picture, it's not any adversarial relationship with the CRA, it's strictly, if the voters wanted the dollars to go to transit, then the Transit Authority should manage the dollars. And they have done a very good job, at least since I've sat on this board, of doing that. And again, there is representation in that area with elected officials who are overseeing the tax dollars that are being expended.
So your view would be therefore, if the CRA, if this were approved, then the members from the City Commission that are on Lam-Ted need to be working very, very closely with the CRA to make certain that if there is a need
Yes.
that that's allocated appropriately.
Yeah.
Commissioner Madden.
I think Commissioner McCarley.
Well, I know Tom Phillips has his hand up again, and I didn't know if he wanted to come back into the, okay. That was going to be, thank you, Commissioner McCarley, that was helpful. I had the same question as Commissioner Music. I have some knowledge of this, but not to the level in depth that you all have, so I'm looking to my colleagues who sit on that board to provide insights and direction and recommendations, because I think there are, I can see the arguments on, on both sides, but I do think you make a compelling case, Commissioner McCarley, about the, how that was designed, the Mass Transit District and those taxing dollars going to that entity investing throughout the entire district.
Commissioner Madden.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you to both rock stars on the front seat here. So I remember, obviously, the last time that the same presentation, it was Nicole before Elise, and we had buckets, and so as a little history piece for my colleagues on, on the Commission who were not here, certainly I was on CRA board at the time. So I had an affinity for CRA, and, you know, the proof's in the pudding. When you see every dollar on that, on that marketing piece that is leveraged with seven private dollars, I knew for a fact that every penny that was put into the CRA hands at the time was reaping public, a private investment too. So, you know, I went with that when I voted last time. Commissioner Music, because I felt like we were on a roll, CRA was moving, I heard the conversations with the projects, and every project that we had, just like we were looking at affordable housing as a priority, we were looking at, will you build a transit, you know, buy a bus, build a shelter, you know, let's do a sidewalk. So, and I felt really good about, you know, the leveraging of the funds that was happening in the CRA at the time, so. But, you know, three years later, I know CRA is on a roll, I'm hopeful that, you know, Elise's leadership in the community economic development and our, everyone, Teresa and Chuck and the team, that continue because they see the support of this Commission for transit and traffic and affordable housing, all these things. I've seen that everybody is kind of collectively working together, like our mission in our city that says, you know, takes everybody, a community working together to achieve an exceptional quality of life. I, I will say that, you know, my colleague now on the transit, it is compelling to also think that, you know, Tom's leadership and the leadership from the county perspective and the city, one of, one of the other things that I was worried about last time is, I felt like, okay, so it goes back to Lam-Ted, will it be all spread out, you know, to the far reaches of the county? And that was not clear to me last time either. And so I was rather, you know, thinking, no, you know, I want to make sure that the tax increment from our area is staying in our area and not going off to Davenport or, you know, to other places. So I feel like that kind of is a little clearer to me now, too, that the dollars do stay in the district. And so I am more inclined to, you know, vote today for this request, but it's in good faith, looking at the two gentlemen on the front row and to my colleagues who sit on that, to really make sure that this is a collective community effort and that, you know, that CRA's hands are tied now, you know, with regard to tying in transit to our different CRA districts, because it is like to, Mr. Drumgo's position on the, you have to have transit to be able to cause these blighted areas to, to come to fruition. So, and I'm also kind of glad, you know, it's just three years later, so I feel like, you know, we'll be watching and seeing how this happened, we could bring it up again, right? Like
Yeah, this could be, this could be reversed.
Yes.
So, and then my last and final thought is, because, you know, you know, it is kind of, when you sit on a certain counselor board as a Commission, you get really familiar with that. And of course, you appreciate the team and the staff, and so I obviously love my CRA team, but I have to say that, Mr. Phillips, those Black History Month bus wraps were beautiful pieces of artwork, and I, just the Peach, Peach Transit Line and the Squeeze, I really, I don't get to sit on that board, but I really do appreciate your leadership, and I can echo what Mr. Drumgo said, I hope you're there for a long time, because I'm putting, I'm hoping to see the same dollars leveraged if the money goes straight to you.
Commissioner Music.
Bear with me, I have a handful of questions, so, you know, one of the things that, that's always difficult is when a subject comes up in front of me that I need to cast a vote on, that I don't feel comfortable with one way or the other. So is the system not working the way that, is it not working correctly? That would be, that would be my first question, and I would like to lead into, we, we talk about the money that was allocated during this taxation, is it not going where it's supposed to? I mean, so wouldn't there be a legal issue there if that's the case? If we take this money away from the CRA, what are the negative? I mean, you're talking about everything's rolling, everything's going. If we pull this away, are we putting on the brake? And I have a difficult time voting using good faith as, as a standard, because any one of these people, and we saw it with Nicole, right? Here promoted, gone, right? So, so to not have something that is, you know, is, is an in writing thing is, is very difficult for me to, to get behind. So I would just, I know they're a little, little rambler, but I'd like some answers to that question, is it not working correctly? Is the money going where it's supposed to do? And if we pull that money away, what's going to happen?
I'm going to
Commissioner McCarley.
The money is going where it's supposed to go. I think the way we, I'm trying to think of a good analogy to, to, to express this really clearly. The money is, I don't think there's any malfeasance, so
There's no malfeasance.
Lay your fears on that. I think the CRA is, is taking that money and, and putting it into transit, and then like Elise said, giving back what's left over back directly to the Transit Authority. So I think all of it is square. What I think is, is as we have grown, the increment is getting to be more and more money. So whereas we may have paid tens of thousands of dollars, however many years ago, we're now at, you know, over a quarter of a million dollars that's going. And so what happens is, is that the CRA uses the money for the CRA areas. So if you're on the Medical Corridor, and I think Tom said, owed to this really well, if you're on the Medical Corridor, which is in one of our CRA districts, that is a voluminous route, like that route gets used all the time. There's, whether or not the CRA has the money or Citrus Connection has the money in whole, that's going to continue, because volume drives quality. So the more people that ride the bus, the better opportunity we have on having better routes and more routes and more often in time. So in the CRA, in the, to say that the CRA has done a good job, they have, in that they have been the catalyst or catapulted in those areas by saying this money needs to be allocated to those areas and making sure that people in those areas are using transit and have the opportunity to do that. My hesitation about that is, we are growing. So we have lots of areas that those areas are working really well with regard to transit, and maybe, correct me if I'm wrong, but my understanding is all the CRA Dixieland with this, with the Peach Line that does the rotation, and, and, you know, we did that in such a way that it, the road diet was a little more manageable, and we started these concurrent cycles of the Peach Line working. We now have the Squeeze, which runs all through downtown that the Transit Authority is paying for. And then, so we've been very nimble in working with the CRA, and I don't think that this is going to eliminate the dialogue between the CRA, because you have the same Commissioners on both boards. So I don't think the CRA is going to have a detriment. But what I do get concerned with, I represent from South Main all the way down to the airport in the Southwest District, and if I look on Olive Street, that's not in a CRA district, so that's over behind, you know, further west of RP Funding. Well, that stop is, is not as good as it should be, and so with limited dollars, because we work on a very limited budget with federal, state, and local dollars, that has to, that and local dollars, that has to, that has to be down on the list because we're kicking all this money over to CRA, and so, and it keeps going higher. We could reallocate that to serve the Lakeland residents that need to be in that Olive Street area, who are just as important as the ones that ride on the medical corridor. We would have the ability as a transit authority to reassign some of that money and spend it where it's needed. That eighteen, $1,800,000 that got kicked back, we can do that, but this would give us a holistic approach. We're not going to, we're not going to neglect the CRA areas. So it's, there's not going to be a ripple effect. I could be wrong, but as the transit chair right now, I won't allow that to happen.
But it, it sounds like, I mean, everybody's saying that the CRA is, is working, it's going well, and it sounds like you're saying that transportation's going well. So if the system is working, why do I want to vote to change it?
We still have gaps in the rest of the city of Lakeland.
That, to answer that question, if this gives more flexibility to use it outside of the CRA than if it is held back, because the goal would be of the CRA is to use it only in the CRA district. The thing that makes this difficult to do is the high respect we have for two people sitting there. And to take away the ability for the CRA to say, I don't want to release those dollars that's not going to be spent in our area.
So, okay, so then that would be, that would be my other question then, is if this money is pulled away, which right now it sounds like you're saying that the money is coming into CRA and then distributing back to the Lamb Ted, right?
Yes, it's all within Lamb Ted.
All of it?
Yes, all of it.
Not all of it.
Because some of it's spent on a transit-related thing, and then that counts as transit, and then anything left over goes back to them to spend heavily.
That's true also, which is a distinction.
Okay, so then I guess my final question would be, how, how is, how is removing those funds going to affect the CRA?
Elise would say negatively. Yeah, but go ahead. You can say yourself.
Yes, Commissioner Music. You know, as, as Tom mentioned, we're 6% of his budget, and he's 4% of ours. And so, again, as, as the other commissioners or the mayor is saying, it is a negative impact because we're not allowed to directly invest those dollars within the redevelopment area. And, you know, in, just in terms of the, the way it's structured, we send back, we prioritize sending back the funding to increase the frequencies of, I believe it's the Pink Line, which services the medical corridor. So, you know, when you think about the amount of time that it takes and the number of people that are moving into the redevelopment area as well, you know, those level of frequencies, they need to go up. And the interlocal gives us the flexibility and the ability to walk into, to mass transit offices and say, hey, you know, we, we see a need for our community. We see a need for these areas that have been historically neglected. And so we're in this space now, which, you know, the, the pace that you mentioned, Commissioner McCarty, that's happening in the southwest, Midtown is still growing as well. You know, these other areas are growing just as fast. And so as we look at removing funding from those areas, you know, there, there's an impact that'll be had there. There's a, there's a potential that the level of service can fall off, you know? And I know that Tom is saying the services won't go away, but we're not talking about decrease in frequency here. We're not talking about potentially not being able to, to catch the bus in both directions with the headways at a, at a time certain for people to be able to go back and forth to work, specifically in an area where people already lack infrastructure and they lack vehicles, they don't have the financial wherewithal or capacity to get back and forth where they need to go.
Commissioner Walker?
I'm sorry?
Well, you've had a question, and then it may tie in. Go ahead.
Well, I think it's important that we, we understand that we, we try to, I'm trying to make sure that we don't, we get to the point where we make this kind of thing adversarial because it should not be that way. You know, we have an authority to make sure the dollars that were imposed by a regulation are used for transit. Now, and I will say, you're correct, Mr. Drumgo, and the CRA areas, especially Midtown, is going. Things are going, but you've got other pockets of our city that also are growing as well. So I think it's important for who handles transit to make sure they do what's best and know what's best for transit because you got, you can always have three of those of us, whoever they may be, it may not be me, Sarah, or Bill, but, excuse me, Mr. Mayor, my city commissioner, but it would, it would be someone. And they're going to make sure, I believe, that those things are done well. Because just like we just said, if it doesn't work, as we make, if it's, gets approved today, surely, you know, you can, we come back and say, okay, now wait, we, we need to get this thing changed, or whatever, that's, that's our look at it. But we, we have pockets in our city that are growing as well, that needs transit also. So let's, let's make sure we can, we can spread the transit dollars as best, you know, where they need to be done. You've got a man here who I believe has done very well to do that and support, you know, transit for our Lakeland Area Mass Transit District. At that, that's where I am.
Commissioner Music, I may be able to add some additional information that you may be seeking. I would just like to point out that since 1982, the inception of Lakeland Area Mass Transit District, we have been paying into the CRA. The agreement that we're all referring to that is set to expire was only created during the last three and a half years of our relationship with the CRA, and it came out of the last request. Prior to that, the Lakeland Area Mass Transit District remitted the payment to the CRA, and they spent it as they saw fit. So I'd also like to point out that you do have assurances well beyond me. It doesn't matter if I'm here or not. I, I plan on staying quite some time. But it, it really doesn't matter who the executive director of Lakeland Area Mass Transit District is, because the Lakeland City Commission has a three-fifths majority on the Lamb Ted Board, and that is through the enabling legislation in 1982. So you always have a three-fifths majority. I'd also like to point out that completely independent of the CRA agreement, we, we did get the seven funds, seven runs of the bus returned to us. The remainder stayed with the CRA to be spent on sidewalk projects, what other, whatever other transit-related projects they saw fit. But we did invest in the Peach Line without asking for additional funds from the CRA, which falls in the CRA district. The Squeeze, as was mentioned, and then I think something that's, that's often overlooked, but reroute 2020, which extended all of the transit in all of the CRAs where we started operating earlier, we ran later, all within budgeted means. So I believe our partnership with the CRA is, is very, very strong. This just allows us to effectively control our own dollars. I, I do not believe, Commissioner Music, that we established this umbilical, this political umbilical cord three years ago, and it's, it's simply not needed.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Drumgo, I have a question to ask. Let's just do the example that Commissioner McCarty brought up, which is Olive Street needs some service deliveries outside of the CRA, and we came and said, we believe that's true. Would that be an allocation you could make or not?
So the CRA is not allowed to pay for items that are outside the redevelopment area. But we have discussed with, with Mass Transit District staff, sending back up to the full increment that they pay in, no matter what that number will be. And we've had those discussions. So we're willing to do that, but those services have to occur within the redevelopment area where there is need. And, you know, make no mistake about it, there is additional need beyond what we currently pay for in the Pink, with the Pink Line. And we, we also talked about subsidizing the Peach Line and then also paying for fare-free Squeeze as well. So we've already had some of those preliminary discussions, and I believe that the staff was very favorable towards that. So, you know, the relationship that you talk about, it does exist, and, and we do. We just want to continue to focus and, and have these services within the redevelopment area.
Okay, Commissioner Reed, and then, did you have your hand up?
No, Stephanie had her hand up.
Okay, thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Elise. So I did, I just had one question. So I, it, it does seem like, you know, there's a positive working relationship, and this is kind of, you know, a difficult decision. I do wonder, you know, because it is, you know, each of the commissioners, you can say that, you know, it's still under the commission's purview because we have this three-fifths majority on the transit, but, I mean, I'm not on there, and our CRA commissioner is not on Lamb Ted. So, you know, I, I feel that if we are going in this direction to give CRA that, the opportunity to be at the table, to be hearing the discussions, to be able to advocate, you know, for the CRA, so they both know, like, how will the cohesion continue if the dollars go straight to transit? Like, who's going to be there, the voice of the CRA, to say, hey, we've got this project coming up, or, hey, we're really trying to, we were really going to try to use these funds to leverage what this developer's doing in this area? You know, what would be kind of a solution for that if, if now they're using the funds as the leverage? Is there a, a seat on the board, or is it that, you know, should it be the CRA, you know, commissioner that's also on the transit? You know, I'm just kind of trying to see, like, because it's true, if you're not at the CRA board or CRA staff, how will the transit authority really know what's coming up? You know, what projects are in the works, where there's going to be needs going forward if they don't have dollars to use as their leverage?
So arguably, the, the CRA representatives and Elise would need to represent to the Lamb Ted members what needs are being ignored and make sure that that three-fifths majority was protected.
And kind of a formalized position on Lamb Ted or something, like, you know, going to those meetings, right? Like, it just can't be like, I hope so.
Well, they attend typically. Elise attends those meetings typically. Commissioner McCarty?
So, yeah, to that point, excitingly, just like our meetings here, the Lamb Ted Board meetings are open to the public, and anyone can come, and the gates are open, and you can sit and listen to all of our transit discussion on the first Wednesday of, second Wednesday of every month. And we would love to have you there. So the CRA is representative, our city staff is so connected, Charpe, Barbie, and Brian Ruiz are at most of our meetings. Elise has been at several of the meetings. So there is a constant dialogue, and I feel like, from working with the Lamb Ted staff for the last year as their chair, we have, we have executive team meetings before, like an agenda study for me as the chair, where we walk through everything, and anything that's brought forth from the city or even from the county is discussed. And so we always want to include and have that dialogue, and they are very amiable, and I think have had good relationships in the past. My, one thing that I would, my last thing I would like to add on this is that the CRA is extraordinarily important to the city of Lakeland, as are the rest of the residents who do not live in the CRA designated areas. And so for us as a transit authority, I have to look at it from a holistic approach. So I don't want another area to be neglected and have, you know, something, yes, if I have to choose, and I am being dictated to, to give back into a CRA, and it can only be used in that area, that's really frustrating with me when I bring up something like Olive Street, because Elise said, we can't reallocate that. If it is, the, the CRA has to work within CRA. So then we're neglecting the rest of this community in the city of Lakeland who pay into this increment on their property taxes. And so that's for me, as a taxpayer, the thing that has pushed me is that, as, when I look at my property tax, and it says that this much money goes to Lakeland Area Mass Transit, I want that money to go to Lakeland Area Mass Transit and not necessarily be reallocated into something else. And so we also pay, you know, the people that live in CRA pay into the CRA increments. And so I understand all of that. I just think it's very similar to me in my nonprofit realm, when I put my nonprofit executive director hat on, that there are oftentimes areas where nonprofits, like the Red Cross who we saw this morning, Meals on Wheels that we saw this morning, that they do their job best with government dollars, and they leverage those dollars the best because they are the experts on Meals on Wheels. They are the experts on tragedy and American Red Cross serving an area. Transit is the authority on transit, and it has to have a holistic approach. So that's one of the reasons why I'm going to support this, is I feel like for the residents of Lakeland, this is a holistic approach.
Any other?
I think, I think Commissioner Music wants to, and I'll go after him.
Well, again, just, you know, again, why I'm struggling with this is, is that it is so much that's new, and I, and I, I think that, first off, didn't we say that there's only a certain percentage of the budget to Lamb Ted that comes from the CRA anyway, right? It's only a certain percentage.
Four percent of the CRA budget comes from Lamb Ted, and then 6% of our transit budget gets paid into the CRA.
So of all of the money that comes into Lamb Ted in a year, how much of that comes from the CRA's money?
Six. Tom, that's a Tom question.
The total of, the total budget, I can get you that number. It would be, I, I would be, I would imagine it would be around 2% to 3%. Commissioner Music, we currently spend, and we haven't talked about this yet, we currently spend $2.1 million in transit to the CRA district. So when we talk about these, these $323,000 worth of funds, the Lakeland Area Mass Transit District is already putting in a unrestricted $2.1 million into the CRA districts.
But we are, it, it sounds like we're arguing about a pretty small percentage, though.
Small, yes.
Yes.
But growing.
Small, but growing.
Well, it's, it's growing, it's growing because the value of property is growing.
Right.
We wouldn't be having this discussion in 2009.
Right.
So, okay, so, so that's, that, okay. All right.
Commissioner Reed, and then Commissioner McLeod.
Okay, well, that, maybe I need to lead him first. Anyway, what I was going to say is, as far as efficiency, and I perceive this as home rule, and you're going, I'm going to call for the question after the vote.
Okay, all right. Commissioner McLeod?
I think we beat this horse long enough.
Yeah. No, I, I was just going to say, it's a good discussion, and I see this as kind of 1A, 1B in terms of our options. And it does make sense from a holistic standpoint to me, even as the CRA commissioner on that board, but when I step back and look at the entire city, look at the entire Mass Transit District, it's not an incredibly large amount of money right now, but as the case has been made, Lamb Ted needs every dollar that they can get to invest back into transit, and I think that number will continue to grow. And so for those reasons, the reasons you all have laid out, I'll support it.
Right, so is there any comments from the public?
Well, it's, it's a procedural under the statute that provides for granting an exemption. What you do is, you can vote on the exemption today, and then I will come back to have the next meeting with an interlocal agreement that sets forth the terms and conditions. It's going to be fairly straightforward. I think what I'm hearing is, it's just a, a flat-out exemption, subject to, you know, a future suspension or revocation upon further action of the city commission.
That's the motion, correct?
Yes.
All right.
My motion is just strictly exemption. That was my motion.
But, but moves us to an interlocal agreement that finally, that states that.
Yes, but without that caveat.
That was not part of your motion, that's correct.
Yeah, that caveat was not part of my motion, no.
Do you want to amend your motion?
I want to, my motion is to exempt him from the CRA village.
Does that give you actionable items?
I mean, I would just bring back a straightforward interlocal agreement, you know, between two parties exempting.
It has to have the agreement.
Okay, right, so.
What was the caveat? I got lost there. There was a, you missed the caveat.
So unless there's a change in the motion, it's just to exempt the agreement as it's written. That net effect will be that it creates the interlocal agreement to be created by City Attorney Davis. He'll bring it back, and we approve that.
I think that prob, that authority probably exists inherently in the statute anyway, but it just would not be specified in an interlocal agreement.
It's already the statute. Yeah, it's already the statute.
Okay. Any other discussion by commissioners? Any questions or discussion by the public on this? Okay, this will be, this is a roll call.
Did we get a second?
Yes, definitely.
There was a second. We had a second, we would have never had a discussion.
Okay, okay, I'm sorry.
This is a voice vote. So all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same. Unanimously, one.
Yeah, and I, and I don't know if I'm allowed to say it, but I just, I just don't feel comfortable because I just don't feel like I have the experience that you all do, and just want to go that direction, so.
Okay, so six to one. All right, thank you for that, and thank you for your time. That will see see meet as a commission, and will now become an equalization board, and we'll have lots in clearing discussions, City Attorney Davis.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The city charter requires that the city commission convene as an equalization board prior to imposing a special assessment lien against private property. So if you, if you've been notified by the city to appear at this morning's meeting relating to the city cutting or clearing your property, this is your opportunity to address the city commission and ask any questions about that you might have, or express any objections you may have.
Mr. Lawrence here, and would like to address the question.
So Commissioner Reed?
Yes, on the first page, I'm, I see a cutting for a yard of $2,600. Can somebody explain why we have a $2,600 lawn mowing cost on Bluefield?
I don't know if anybody, some staff can address that.
It may be numerous cuts. It doesn't appear that way because there's a, maybe I'm missing something. Where is the, Longfield Avenue? What does Longfield Avenue? Longfield Avenue.
Good morning. Sunny Marshall, Code Enforcement Manager for the city of Lakeland. This property in particular had a very large cleanup, has met teams, fire, law enforcement had to be involved with the situation that was going on on this property. So, we sent a contractor, of course, after notification, to get an estimate for an entire property cleanup. So, this is the amount that resulted from that cleanup.
Beyond cutting the grass?
Beyond cutting the grass.
Got it.
Yes.
And that's inclusive?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Thanks for the clarification.
You're welcome.
Okay, are there any representatives that are on this list that would like to address the commission or the equalization board?
And Mr. Law is not on this list. He's from a previous meeting that he was unable to make, so.
Let's do it.
May want to take that separately from this particular item.
Okay.
Motion to approve this one.
Motion to approve in a second. Any questions by commissioners? Any comments or questions by the public? It's not on this one yet, sir. My mistake. Just stand by and we'll get, we'll get to you. By the public, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same. Unanimously passes as the equalization board and we will cease meeting as an equalization board, reconvene as a commission, and that takes us to public hearings. And City Attorney Davis, where would Mr. Law be?
You can either address him now or at, under the audience portion at the end of the meeting.
Let's address him now since he's here. So, Mr. Law, just come forward if you wouldn't mind, please.
Fred Law, LOHR. I had a notice from the code enfor, I own a couple of lots out in the Dixieland area that as a general contractor, I'm keeping those lots. One day, I hope to put them, I own apartments here in Lakeland Commercial Property and I hope to put some more apartments on those, on those two lots. But in the meantime, and my family has owned those lots when I was a toddler. So, I've owned them a long, long time, long before the code enforcement ordinance came into being and, and then, but back in July of last year, somewhere, somewhere I received a letter from, from the code enforcement that they needed to be mowed, those two lots needed to be mowed the latter part of July. Well, I was going on vacation for a couple of weeks and so, I made sure I went out there to, but, but let me, before that, let me make this statement. I had an agreement with the lady that owned the property right adjacent to me on the east to mow one half of the lots. And I had that agreement with her for a long, long time. Well, I went out, prior, prior to the latter part of July of last year, I went out to mow my part of the, of the property. I mowed my part of the property and went out of town and I assumed she was going to mow her part of the property. When I came back, she had not mowed her part of the property. And so, then I went ahead and made arrangements to mow her part of the property and I've maintained the property ever since then. So, sometime, maybe a couple months later, I received a notice from your financial agency that there was some money owed on the mowing of the lots, which, which I was, I talked to Brian Ruiz about this and, and he said, well, maybe I should, I think Brian should have made the agreement right then, but he referred it to the equalization board. So, here I am right now making a request that I don't think that money was, I don't think I owe that money.
Well, the question I would have, or the comment I would have is, we don't have an agreement with your neighbor. You do. And so, if she doesn't cut the grass, that's not the city's problem. That's your responsibility.
Mayor, when I came back, after, after I came back, those lots were not mowed by the time, in other words, her half was not mowed. So, I made, I made arrangements at that time to mow the lots and I've maintained them ever since, since then without any agreement from her.
Yes, Commissioner Matt.
Thank you. So, I'm assuming we do not charge for a mowing unless a mowing has taken place?
Correct.
So, there was a mow, mowing that took place that was charged. Must have been somewhere when he was out of town?
It happened because there was tall grass, yes.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. At some increment of time. And we paid, and we paid for that service because it wasn't done by the owner.
We can drop the administrative component, but we can't drop the mowing costs.
What was the cost on that, sir?
$237.
$237.
But there was another $200 fee that, I don't know what that fee was anyway. Brian Ruiz excused that fee. So, it went down to $237.
Which is the cost of our money.
Yeah.
Which, which I did not, in other words, I did my part, I thought.
Okay. Mr. Ruiz is going to come and make a comment for us.
Good morning.
Good morning.
On the record, Brian Ruiz, Director of Community and Economic Development. I'm kind of like Beetlejuice, I guess, today after I heard my name a third time. I needed to get up and speak to you.
He didn't get up here.
Mr. Law's summary of most of that is, is accurate. I, there, there was an additional $200 nuisance abatement fee that is calculated and imposed based on a city commission resolution and is derived from the number of times in the prior 12-month period the property has been cut and cleaned to act as additional disincentive, if you will, for a property owner allowing their property to become unkempt and require the intervention of our code enforcement staff. Because in, let me put my readers on so I can see this, last summer, myself and Sunny Marshall, who you just heard from, met with Mr. Law about a couple of prior charges, prior to the November 2021 charge that is, was on last month's equalization roll. Mr. Law had a couple of lot clearing charges and related administrative costs. That 165 additionally is included, again, by city commission resolutions for all of our lot cleaning and clearing activities. And at that time, Mr. Law asserted, and we've disagreed on this for a number of years, that a former director of our department, Jim Studiell, had created some type of arrangement with him that allowed him to not mow or neglect seagrass that is growing on the property. I'll call it seagrass. I'm not exactly sure. Bill Cohen could tell me the exact genus and species, but it's, it grows quite wild and so, the neighborhood complains frequently and we have mowed it. But in that case, last summer, specifically July the 30th of 2021, I agreed with Mr. Law that we would relieve him of, oh, somewhere in the neighborhood of $500 worth of lot clearing charges if he would commit henceforth to maintain the property so that we never again had to cut and clean it. Fast forward to September, October, only a couple of months later, we cited the property, cut and cleaned the property. That cutting, because of the prior cuttings, included a $200 nuisance abatement fee. And because in July, I had relieved Mr. Law of those charges, I felt it unfair that we tack on a $200 nuisance abatement fee for lot clearing charges that I had credited. So, I relieved him of that $200, leaving the $237 balance that was reflected on the equalization roll last month that the commission did equalize. And when Mr. Law contacted me earlier this month, excuse me, late last month, it was to explain that he had been involved in an accident and could not make the February 7th equalization hearing. And so, he was asking to have that rescheduled. By the time of his contact, you had already equalized it. So, in concert with our city attorney's office, we determined based on prior commission action years ago that delegated the authority to reconsider equalized lot clearing and demolition special assessments to the code enforcement board, that Mr. Law's proper venue is to seek that reconsideration from the code enforcement board. I communicated that with him last week and he disagreed and said, I want to speak to the commission, which is, of course, his right. So, that's why he's here this morning.
So, I think as an equalization board, we'll continue to utilize that policy. If you're going to readdress it, you need to do it with code enforcement.
Yes.
And we're finished on this.
I'm, I'm not sure I understood everything Brian is, is related to you people, but let me go back a few years.
Mr. Law, we're done. So, this is not the venue for this. So, you need to go to the code enforcement board to have this reconsidered.
Yes.
We're finished on this. Okay? So, we don't need any other recap. Thank you, sir. Appreciate it.
So, I want to go back to the code enfor, well.
To have it, to have it redressed. He can talk.
Bruce, is that what I'm hearing?
That's correct.
Okay.
Thank you, sir.
Well, thank you very much.
Appreciate it. All right, now we are, we cease meeting as a code enforce, as an equalization, oh, no, come on up, sir, please.
I appreciate your time.
Go ahead.
I'm Chris Oliver. I live at 620 Lake Miriam Drive. I'm the direct neighbor to the eastern border of the proposed project. My uncle purchased this property and it's been in the family now for 40 years. He purchased it directly from Publix. And according to this site, or.
Excuse me, let's, may I ask a question?
Yes, sir.
Is this, does this relate to equalization? Is you, do you have an address on this list for the equalization clearing? That's what we're doing right now.
Okay, I apologize.
That's, that's just, you're just, thank you. That's okay.
It happens.
My bad.
It happens.
Hang tight. Does anybody else have anything they want to talk about lots and clearing? All right, and pastor present. We cease meet, to meet then as an equalization board, reconvening as a commission. And that brings us to public hearings, 3C1.
And we have a, a, a public presentation by our housing department relating to the possible receipt of 1.4 million dollars worth of ARPA funds that Andy Gibson will talk about.
Good morning, good morning.
Good morning.
Andy Gibson, Housing Programs Coordinator. Can you guys hear me or is the mic?
Let's see if this mic is fixed. It's all disembodulated. There we go.
Andy Gibson, Housing Program Supervisor with the Community and Economic Development Planning and Housing Division. With me is Adina Knisk. I am here today to discuss the Home American Rescue Plan 2020-2021. So, in addition to the American Rescue Plan money that the city receives separately from the Department of Treasury, we were also allocated, HUD was also allocated $5 million to provide housing services and shelter to individuals experiencing homelessness and vulnerable populations to be allocated to entitlements who receive home funds, and that's the city of Lakeland. The city was allocated 1.4 million dollars. And specifically, they outlined for us the use of those funds. So, what I'm going to do is cover the categories, the beneficiaries of those funds and the uses of those funds. So, the qualifying population for those funds, for one, are homeless. And I can give you a couple definitions of homelessness. An individual or family who lack a fixed, regular, adequate nighttime residence, meaning those folks living in abandoned cars, buildings, campground, living in a supervised operated shelter for temporary living arrangements. An individual or family who lose their, who has lost their primary nighttime residence within the next 14 days, or unaccompanied youth under the age of 25. So, that's one group that we are required to assist. Another group is at-risk homelessness. And that group includes individuals or families who are fleeing or attempting to flee domestic violence, dating violence, sexual assaults, stalking, and other dangerous and life-threatening conditions. The third group is we want to prevent homelessness. So, they have pretty much given us the, another type of folks to assist. And those folks who are currently housed due to temporary emergency assistance, who needs additional housing and supportive services for returning, for not returning to homelessness. And in particular, the greatest risk for those groups, we're looking at two different income levels. We're looking at 30% of the area median income, and that is a family of four making $26,500. And also, 50% of the area median income. And that's a group, families making $30,850. So, you have the priorities of homeless and the prevention of homelessness. And we're looking at the categories of 30% and 50% of the area median income who are cost burden. That means that they are paying over 50% of their income for housing costs. The use for those funds are affordable rental housing, which includes acquisition, standard rental housing, construction of rental housing, rehab of rental housing, and eligible expenses can be hard or soft cost, relocation, operating cost assistance. Tenant-based rental, which funds may be used to assist qualifying populations that I mentioned before, to pay rent, security deposit, utility deposit. Supportive services for those folks who I mentioned before, such as childcare, educational service, employment services, job training, food, counseling, medical health services, substance abuse. And the last one is non-conjugate shelter, which means one or more building that provide private units or rooms for temporary shelter serving individuals or families of those qualifying groups and you do not have to have a lease. And those eligible, for that particular group also, the eligible activities are acquisition of the structure, new construction, or rehab of an existing construction. So, with our HUD money in particular, we have to have our public participation segment and that's what we're doing today. But prior to this, we, as an entitlement, have reached out to the continuum of care, the homeless continuum of care, the public housing authority, homeless providers, public and private service providers. We have to identify the needs and the gaps. And we have already had that in pretty much in, the data has been collected in our, for one, five-year consolidated plan in our 2020 analysis of impairment for fair housing. So, we have to identify those gaps and what we have to do is we have to present to you all as a commission, for your input, the recommendations, what I've collected, what we have collected, and get your input. So, thus far, as you can see, we've held meetings with the homeless coalition. We've held two virtual meetings with developers, homeless providers, affordable housing advisory committee, neighborhood associations, public service agencies. So, out of those discussions, we have come several topics. And one was the lack of affordable housing, supportive and social services for persons of homelessness, and food insecurity for homeless children. Most of the remarks that we received back expressed homelessness. Homeless, the greatest impact for the use of funds would be to build more affordable housing and impact those people who are homeless and those folks who are making 50% of the area median income. So, with the recommendation from the public input and also from the senior staff, planning and housing has outlined the attached distribution for the Home American Rescue Plan funds. So, we have elected not to use the full 15%, which would be $210 for administration, but $151,000. And the plan is to, from your input, is you reuse the remaining portion of the money to build affordable housing units. We don't know right now, but we estimate 10 to 15 units with the 1.2 million dollars. After your input today, comments. And it is advertised on the, the city's website until March the 14th, I believe. We are able to, from your input, we are able to write the requests for proposals for one or more providers. And then, of course, after we get those results back and, and that is determined, we would have to bring it back to you all in, in an action plan, substantial amendment, get your approval, and then again, submit it to HUD for their approval. That concludes my presentation. Any questions?
Commissioner Reed.
Thank you. Thank you for being here today. Can we utilize any of that money to build on our home, on the lots that we have that we've allocated for, for, you know, our almost giveaway lots type stuff?
Well, one of the things that they mention in, in the, in the plan is they're looking for rental units. And I believe one of the criteria is for the homes that we are building with the infield lot is for homeownership.
Correct. But I didn't, is it strictly for?
Rental units.
Rentals?
Yes, sir.
But we could build homes for rentals, I guess, could we not?
Yes, you can.
Okay.
Other questions? Commissioner McClellan.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Andy. And I had the same question as Commissioner Reed, wondering about the land.
And I had the same question as Commissioner Reed, wondering about the land bank lots, if we were able to utilize those. Looking at that 1.2 million, is that, are we focusing that on rental housing? Because if we tried to put it into other areas, it really doesn't leave enough to, to do a rental housing development.
Of the other programs that are outlined, those are very time and staff intensive because you would have to, staff will have to supervise who you give money to as an oversight and make sure the funds are getting to the right agency. So it's really a, a staff intensive.
And there's certainly a need for affordable rental housing.
Yes. I mean, this is me 10 to 15 units, but.
Yeah.
Yes.
How do you see that being used best, from your perspective?
Adding to the affordable housing units. That's, I mean, because when you have developers and even the general contractors that are already building within the city, you know, this is pretty much, is a million dollars is not very much money. So it would be their gap money for one or two providers.
For support, yeah.
Any other questions? They need a motion, yes.
Wanting to approve what they outlined as being presented.
Second. And a second. Discussion by commissioners. Commissioner Madden.
Thank you. Thank you, Annie. And this is so exciting. I was hoping that we would be able to, you know, really utilize the momentum that we have. And so I'm excited to see that from your stakeholder meetings and from your public input, that they came to the same conclusion that we've been coming to, that if we take that money and leverage it with private dollars, we get a lot more units than if we are just, you know, doing rental assistance or even some wraparound services, those dollars are spent and gone. But if they are matched with private investment, then we have, you know, more units altogether. So we need altogether more rental units. And in a project, 10 to 15 of those become that 30 to 50% AMI level, but the rest are market rate. I feel like then, then we're meeting so many more things in the community. I think we talked about this in our strategic planning, that once we have, you know, once and if we get to the place where we have the correct number of units for our populace, then we can maybe rethink about how we offer, you know, nonprofits or wraparound services or rental assistance. But what we noticed prior to this effort was that we could give out all the vouchers for free rent that we wanted, but there were no units for folks to be able to, to rent. So thank you so much for all of your hard work and really excited to be able to add this to what we've already dedicated. And hopefully there are developers out there listening who want to partner with us to make sure that these are built as quickly as possible.
Mr. Mayor, I think we need to see if anyone from the public has any.
We will, we will.
Thank you.
I just want to make sure I have any, no more commissioner discussion on this. All right. Commissioner Reed.
It's unfortunate, but, you know, the rental housing market is, is tight. And I was reading last night in Arizona, a brand-new 300-unit, single-family development was being developed. BlackRock came in, paid $25,000 more than every, bought every single home in that subdivision, probably $300,000 a piece, and going to turn it into a rental community of single-family homes. And that's happening all over the country. And these big funds are coming in and unfortunately making affordable housing unaffordable. But they're because of the rental market. And we're going to probably see more of it, but it's happening. And hopefully we can leverage this money with some affordable housing and get, have to go multi-story, but as opposed to single-family homes. But it's a, it's a real effort to accommodate our, our needy citizens with the market the way it is today.
What BlackRock is doing is a picture of how our society wants single-family homes, but they want to rent them because they want the flexibility to move. And that's not this same market, right? That's what I'm talking about. But that is indicative of what's happening in our country, where people don't necessarily want to own their homes and build the equity in it. They just want the flexibility to live in a nice house and rent. And so we see those kinds of developers across the country doing this in multiple markets. That's a different story in another time. Any other commissioner comments? Any comments from the public at all on this? Yes, please. And on this topic, right?
Yes.
Okay. Just come on up to the mic, state your name, please.
Just a quick question.
Yeah. That's what this is for.
Andrew Williams, City of Lakeland. I just had a question for you is, is, you know, working with the CRA and some of the developments that they've been taking on, are there any requirements for affordability built into new developments coming into Lakeland?
Yes.
I've looked at the town for quite some times and coming back now.
I don't think the mic's picking up.
Yeah, get closer, closer to them.
Is, yeah. And so just a question is, is there already an affordability requirement built into new developments?
Correct. It's a very high priority of this commission. And we have done, have constructed or have under construction over 600 units that have specifications and requirements. And Commissioner Madden was talking about the fact we try and find some funds that we can help the developer leverage so that we end up being able to have $20, $25 spent for every dollar that we're investing.
Absolutely. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions from the audience? All those, this is a voice vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same. Unanimously passes. Thank you, Annie, for your work on preparation on this and for that RQ. All right. That brings us to item number two.
Item number two is a required annual report by the Community Development Department in order to maintain the city's, city planning department's certification with the, with the state of Florida. That certification allows the city to be exempt from the state regional review process for comp plan amendments, except for very limited circumstances. I don't know if Teresa or, it's going to be, it's going to be Chuck that's going to
It's not working for me.
Yep, it's not working.
I'm sure she's or her on my part.
It's done by now.
Right, it's not working.
No, I'll get it rolled. I'll get it. Andrew, if you can hear me, can you switch? He's doing it. Perfect.
Oh, thank you.
Presentation computer, Andrew.
Yeah. It's like even a church.
We're working on it. The system is frozen on our end too. Opposed.
All right, so we're in a whole pattern.
Well, what I'll do is I'll just go ahead and kick things off verbally, because really all I had was one slide. The City of Lakeland is one of four or five certified communities in Florida when it comes to comprehensive planning and our land development process. And so with that certification, we are able to process comprehensive plan amendments in a much more expedited fashion than other similar local governments around the state. And so with that certification, each year we provide a monitoring report to the Florida, hey, thanks, to the Florida Department of Economic Opportunity.
Kevin, you and Alex have to stand there.
Let's off the laptop.
Chuck, you're doing great verbally.
Hey, can you stop? That's not made a big, please stop. We're going against what he's trying to do.
Right. All right. So just go ahead, Chuck, and talk about the conference.
So in terms of what we provide to the Department of Economic Opportunity each year is a, is a certification report that highlights the number of annexations, the number of land use amendments, both large scale and small scale, as well as how we're meeting metrics related to density, affordable housing, multimodal transportation. And so the report that the commission has and that will be asked to have a public hearing on is just really to acknowledge those efforts and to be able to approve the report ultimately to provide to the Department of Economic Opportunity. So on the screen, on the left-hand side are the number of, of land use amendments that were approved over the past year back in 2021. We had three small-scale amendments, which were typically less than 10 acres. Statute has changed now, so the small-scale threshold is 50 acres, but it was 10 acres as of, as of last year. And then we had the one, which is number four, is the VA clinic site off of Lakeland Highlands Road. And then to the right is just a, a screenshot of an excerpt of, of a table that is one of several pages of data and narrative to at least demonstrate how we're meeting the obligations contained in our agreement with the state of Florida. So with that, I will stand for any questions and ask for the public hearing.
All right. Questions from commissioners?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir. Commissioner Walker.
Thank you, sir. Not a question, but I think it's so important that the public understands where we fit into this particular conundrum, where we are one of only four cities in the state that can, does not have to go through the process of having everything heard by, of course, the state requiring us to send things to them and for their approval before we can do anything, basically. So we're one of those four. I think there's another, maybe Miramar and Orlando, but we're one of the four and the state as a whole that can do justice. And that's important because we do things right. And I, I, I want to make sure we understand that. We're doing things right. We're doing things that will help support what's best for our city as a whole, so we do not have to go through and get states' approval to make these kind of situations come about. Thank you.
And it's a very extensive process.
Very extensive.
Commissioner Madden.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Chuck. So, you know, we really didn't talk about this a lot on Friday, but I'm just curious on how this discussion or with what Commissioner Walker said about being one of four, how does this parlay into our conversation with regard to traffic and your opportunity to do what you'd like to do versus what the state kind of changed the game in the middle? How does that fall into this discussion?
It's really a separate issue than, than I would say the, the preemption of our local authority to make concurrency decisions. So it's really a, a separate, a separate issue. I would say that where there is maybe a bit of overlap from a transportation standpoint is how we are responsible for showing how we're moving people with other methods other than the automobile. So we have to show how many, how much sidewalk we're, we're constructing, how the Citrus Connection is, is meeting our, our objectives when it comes to frequencies on the fixed route bus system. We also take a look at planned unit developments, land use changes, zoning actions that have some type of multimodal transportation condition element to it. So we do have to show that we are looking very broadly at how we handle traffic and moving people around the city. But that is something that frankly, we have, we, we already have more flexibility on in that regard. It is different than the legislative restrictions that we have in terms of how we look at highway capacity and, and developer mitigation. So they're almost really two, two separate issues, but there is an overlap in terms of our multimodal level of service standards, which were adopted in our comprehensive plan and are implemented through our land development code.
Okay. Because, I mean, you know, comprehensive plan, it sounds like it would be altogether comprehensive. And to be able to have the quality of life that we want, you know, the traffic is such a huge part in so much of what we're hearing. And interestingly enough, you know, in our citizens' survey, it just keeps coming up and keeps coming up. So I'm really just trying to get to the bottom of, you know, who's ultimately in charge of traffic and how much leverage we have to control our own destiny with, with, you know, the comprehensive plan, there's so much verbiage in there with regards to working with the near inner agencies, you know, other government agencies like schools. And I'm thinking of school traffic lines and working with, you know, the county and working with, you know, for this quality of life. And so, you know, moving into this period of growth with the comprehensive plan, you know, kind of as our guide, I'm just curious, you know, like if it was you and you looked through our comprehensive plan and what we dream and hope for our future going forward in growth, you know, where are our major impediments and why are they there? Like either who's the culprit or what's the solution?
I, to me, from a, from a land development standpoint, probably the biggest constraint that we have is on properties where there are existing zoning entitlements and development programs, that development proposals are coming in that are either on a failing or a, a about-to-fail roadway corridor. The legislature and, and as I mentioned on Friday, I think a lot of this started during the Great Recession in the way to kind of jumpstart the real estate market. But what hap, what has happened is it used to be that if we had a, had a roadway that operated at a failing level of service or a development was going to cause to fail, then we would have the ability to either require additional mitigation or slow the pace, you know, maybe look at phasing of a development until the capacity, that infrastructure, that roadway capacity was able to catch up. Starting in about 2009 into 2011, the legislature really took that away from local governments and said that we could not punish new development for the failings, the existing failings of an, of, of a roadway system, and that we could not make the developer pay more than its impact on that road system. So if you've got development that's paying impact fees, even though those impact fees are going into much larger districts, in our case, we've got a north district and a south district, that that is seen as a big part of fulfilling their requirements to mitigate their impacts. What we have done, and this gets back to some of the contents of our certification report, is that if there are sidewalk connections, sidewalk connections, if there are trail connections, if there are, you know, transit mitigation, transit stops, those types of things, that's where we've been able to kind of work on the edges to say, where we are restricted from a highway standpoint, we are able to work as best as we can to provide capacity through other transportation modes. And so the, the key to that, and this is something that comes back around in the comprehensive plan, is looking at our activity centers, looking at our transit-oriented corridors and some of the, our level of service policies that are spelled out to, to clearly show that, you know, development wants to come in, to some degree, we, you know, if the zoning's in place, we're restricted on, on, on the ability to say no. But our yes comes with other things that are adopted in here, you know, like Lakeland Central Park or, you know, Riverstone or Hawthorne Ranch. There are some other things that we're able to do to mitigate development impacts through looking at other transportation modes and having them pay either impact fees, build portions of our road system internal to their site. So there are some things that we've been able to navigate that has, you know, it requires a lot of negotiation with the development community. But, but certainly, those are things that we've been able to do to manage growth in today's environment where frankly, Tallahassee doesn't want local government to manage growth. And, and that's, that's, you know, I can't put it any plainer than that. And that's a big concern that I know the community has. I know it's a big concern we have and the elected officials have. So we're, we're, we're doing the best that we can within the rules of the roads that are laid out 300 miles north of here to be able to move people. I, I think the other issue that we have too is, is that, you know, roadways, and I'll be the first to say, roadways do not solve all of our mobility challenges. I was in Brandon this weekend and it's an eight-lane road, and it took me longer to get through Brandon than it did get from here to Brandon. So I will say that it's a balance. We've got to have a balance. And I think that Lakeland has traditionally done a very good job of that, which is why we're still a certified community. It's, you know, it's intersections, it's sidewalks, it's, it's trying to better manage the operations of our roadway system. But still, we're, we're, we're at some point limited by, by state legislation.
Okay. And then my second part of that question was, so the first was traffic. The second was, you know, when you look at like the land use category, and you know, when you're a relatively smaller community and you have your urban core, it's kind of small, and, you know, what you allow in what is an urban development versus your central city versus your suburban areas is supposed to be different. How, in your opinion, you know, like, if you think of this exponential growth we're about to have, you know, people move to Lakeland, they think southwest Lakeland's rural, you know, or for sure at least suburban, you know, not urban or even central city. So how do we go forward with this comprehensive plan, thinking contextually about neighborhoods and thinking, you know, obviously we're like, bring it on, bring it, build it high in your downtown core, that's what a urban. core, that's what an urban, you know, core is for, right? But how far does, you know, when other places, like, I don't know, Chattanooga Green, but when these places grow, like from a rural suburban sprawl model like Polk County and Lakeland, how do we manage that? I mean, when does everything just all become urban development? Meaning like, people assume that they like live in a suburban area, that they're not going to have, you know, 55 aprons down their road, you know, to commercial, you know, stores and retail. So my question is, you know, if you're not growing, it's easy to plan all this and say that, and contextually, this is this area, this is this area. And my fear is that we have this by right development in all these areas because of projections of growth and what we did, what we could, but we thought we had this opportunity to sort of make changes if necessary. Now we can't make those changes if necessary. So now we have all this by right development, roads are failing, and then add to that, contextually, you feel like, you know, in our comprehensive plan, we're supposed to have green space and natural resources. And so I know that we are, we have one of four because we bought the parkland in southwest to make sure we have green space out there in the middle of all this hypergrowth. You know, we're doing the best that we can with the tools that we have, and I think we have a phenomenal team, and I think this commission is super supportive, and that's our hope too. I'm just worried that in this, in this, what are the, how can we preserve these things that we have planned that are important to us in this comprehensive plan, unlike the last decade, but in a new decade of dynamic and rapid and radical growth if we don't have some of the tools to be able to mitigate some of these things like traffic and green space and natural resources that it seemed like we had a little bit more before?
Part of, and to try to tackle maybe a couple of different key points of that is with our, with our level of service standards in our comprehensive plan, what we are really truly trying to do is encourage more intensive growth in our central city area, which is between the Parkway, the interstate from, say, Lake Parker Avenue over towards Wabash. That's kind of the central city area. And so from that standpoint, our roadway levels of service are minimal, frankly, because we want to encourage that more high-density type, either infill residential or multifamily development. And so that's where, you know, it's kind of like looking at an egg, it's the, you know, it's right there in the middle of where we want to focus because most of that infrastructure's already in place. Beyond that, what we try to do is look at our corridors, and this morning, Citrus Connection conversation is an example. We have transit-oriented corridors that are based on frequent transit services that run south of Florida Avenue, south of the city limits, because we plan around Lakeland, not just in Lakeland itself. So we go south of Lakeland, north past Lakeland Square Mall, and then Memorial Boulevard and Bartow Road are in Lakeland Hills are our key transit-oriented corridors. So if development is looking for some other type of area, we extend out and say, okay, we want to encourage development on these transit-oriented corridors extending out from the central city where that infrastructure is available. When you start going to like southwest in an area that certainly has been a challenge for us around the airport, we try to look at like the sector plans that have been developed over the years in working with the county of saying, okay, we need a good residential employment retail mix in those areas. And a lot of what we're seeing out there now is just really an issue of phasing. We've got all the business park employment, you know, GEICO was the first one in there 25, 30 years ago. We have other, either offices or industrial development that are locating around the airport. Now we're getting the residential, both multifamily and single-family, and then now with the rooftops are in place, we're starting to see the retail come along like at Pipkin and County Line Road. So, you know, that is an area that we're not on a transit-oriented corridor, we're not in the central city, but we're around a major employment center called the airport, and that's where, you know, things are starting to happen. And in those instances, even though it's away from the central city, we're, you know, we're working with our partners at the county to get that, get that balance so that in a perfect world, folks wouldn't have to drive 10 or 15 or 20 miles to go to work and shop and those types of things. It takes time. You know, one of the biggest challenges we have is the phasing of meeting the goals and objectives in the comprehensive plan, because it doesn't drop from the sky overnight.
It's why you have one.
It is.
That's why you have, that's why you take time to plan.
Thank you, Mayor. There again, to not get ahead of ourselves, I think I'll defer to our first readings, we're going to address some of these same issues. I didn't want to belabor this particular comment now, but, and I'll reserve my comments for questions for a few minutes from now.
Any other commissioner comments or questions, any questions by the audience or comments? All right, this is a voice vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same unanimously passes. So we have no community redevelopment agency report other than the one we had earlier when we had that discussion. City manager is, has two items. City manager Strauss.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. My first item that I have is a recommendation regarding a task authorization with Environmental Science Associates, or ESA, for the Lake Parker Tributary Swamp Restoration Feasibility Study. The city received a 50% matching grant from the Southwest Florida Water Management District for this restoration feasibility study. The proposed project consists of an evaluation for nutrient reduction and water quality improvement alternatives to reduce pollutant loading to Lake Parker. Lake Parker does not meet current water quality standards and has a mandated nutrient reduction plan from the Florida Department of Environmental Protection. A not-to-exceed fee of $160,000 has been negotiated under the city's continuing municipal engineering agreement with ESA, and the city will be fully reimbursed for the 50% of those expenditures up to $80,000. Funding for the project is provided in the FY22 Stormwater CIP budget. Staff would recommend that the city commission authorize the appropriate city officials to execute the task authorization with ESA for the Lake Parker Tributary Swamp Feasibility Study in the amount not to exceed $160,000.
Move to approve.
Motion to approve in a second. You got those, Kellyanne?
I got them.
All right, and discussion by commissioners. Any discussion or questions by the audience? It's a voice vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same unanimously passes. That brings us to item 5B.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. My second and final item is regarding the award of a bid to Service Works for roofing project at the city of Lakeland's TND and Central Stores Warehousing. The project includes the provision of all labor, material, equipment, supervision, and administration. The city received seven bids for this project. Together with the city's engineering consultant firm REI, city staff reviewed the bids and confirmed that the scope of work complies with the project requirements. The initial lowest bidder withdrew their bid citing unforeseen circumstances, so the second lowest bidder was Service Works. A notice of intent to award was issued by the city on February 17th, 2022. Funding is provided in the fiscal year '22 TND and Purchasing Roof Replacement Fund. It's recommended the city commission authorize the award of bid number 1333 to Service Works for the roofing project in the amount of $793,447.
Is there a motion to approve?
No motion.
Motion to approve in a second and discussion by commissioners? Any discussion or questions by any members of the audience? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed, same unanimously passes. Before we go on, I need to go back to the item 3C2, the Local Government Comprehensive Plan Certification Monitoring Report Presentation. I was out of the room. Was a motion made? We did it, we voted on it.
Yes.
Who made the motion?
Oh, I'm Kelly.
I don't, that's it. I don't have who moved and seconded to approve it, just that all seven voted to approve it.
Motion to approve.
Second.
And a second, so that would be Commissioner Walker and Commissioner Madden seconded. All right.
Thank you.
All right, thank you very much. Bring us city attorney, item 6A1.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We have several ordinances for first reading this morning. These will be read by title only today, and we'll come back for a public hearing in consideration of final action on March 21st. And just to expound on that, the purpose of today is really just to serve as public notice. So, you know, any testimony that you receive today would really not become a part of the legal record that would support your decision on the 21st, or that could be served to support any decisions you make and any legal appeal thereafter. So today really, again, is just the public notice portion of the process.
The importance of that awareness by the audience is that as they do this first reading, it wouldn't be appropriate for us to take any conversation on any of these first reading topics as it normally does not anyway, because that's always done at the second reading. Okay, go ahead.
The first ordinance is proposed ordinance number 22-010, an ordinance relating to local government comprehensive planning, making findings, providing for an update to the capital improvements element of the Lakeland comprehensive plan, our community 2030, as adopted by ordinance 5885, provided for severability, provided an effective date. The second ordinance is proposed ordinance number 22-011, an ordinance relating to zoning, making findings, providing for a change in zoning from RA3, single-family residential to O1, low-impact office, on approximately .16 acres located at 215 West Oak Drive, providing conditions, finding conformity with the comprehensive plan, providing for severability, provided an effective date. Next is proposed ordinance number 22-012, an ordinance relating to zoning, making findings, providing for a change in zoning classification from I2 medium industrial to PUD plan unit development on property located at 3115 Drainfield Road, providing conditions, finding conformity with the comprehensive plan, providing for severability, provided an effective date. Next is proposed ordinance number 22-013, an ordinance relating to zoning, making findings. Amending ordinance 3449 is amended to provide for a modification to plan unit development PUD zoning to allow an apartment complex with a maximum of 244 multifamily dwelling units on approximately 12.07 acres, generally located south of Lake Miriam Square Shopping Center, north of Lake Miriam Drive, east of South Florida Avenue, and west of Lakeland Highlands Middle School, finding conformity with the comprehensive plan, providing for severability, provided an effective date. Next is proposed ordinance number 22-014, an ordinance relating to local government comprehensive planning, making findings, providing for a small-scale amendment number LUS 21-01004 to a certain portion of the future land use map of the Lakeland comprehensive plan, our community 2030, changing the future land use designation from Neighborhood Activity Center to Residential High on approximately 17.2 acres, and Neighborhood Activity Center to Convenience Center on approximately 1.5 acres of property located at the southwest corner of West Pipkin Road and Yates Road, provided for severability, provided an effective date. Next is proposed ordinance number 20-015, that should be 22-015, an ordinance relating to zoning, adopting findings, providing for PUD plan unit development zoning to allow multifamily residential development with a maximum of 252 dwelling units on approximately 17.2 acres located at the southwest corner of West Pipkin Road and Yates Road, finding conformity with the comprehensive plan, providing for severability, provided an effective date. Once again, these ordinances will all come back for a public hearing on March 21st, at which time public testimony will be taken and consideration of final action will occur as well.
Thank you. That takes us to resolutions. Item 1, B1.
B1 is proposed resolution number 22-009, a resolution relating to assessments determining the necessity for having clean and cleared certain properties within the city of Lakeland, providing for the assessment of liens against such property for expenses incurred in the cleaning and clearing thereof, providing an effective date.
Is there a motion to approve?
There's a motion.
Second.
And a second, and discussion by commissioners? Any discussion or questions by the audience? Seeing none, this is a rule call vote. Commissioner Walker.
Aye.
Commissioner, music.
Aye.
Aye.
Yes.
Aye.
And that, with Commissioner Madden out of the room, that passes 6-0.
Next is proposed resolution number 22-011, a resolution authorizing execution of an amended grant agreement with the Florida Department of Transportation to add state and local funding for the construction phase of the Taxway ES project at Lakeland Lander International Airport, adopting findings, provided an effective date.
No periperal.
Motion to approve in a second. Discussion by Commissioner Reed.
I see Chris is here. I hope he brought some maps today so we can just kind of tell us where they may be. So, thank you, sir.
I bring maps.
As you can see on the map above, Echo is the one that runs north-south, and Sierra is the one that runs straight north. It's in the southeast corner of the airport.
Has he got a little?
There's a little pointer on that.
Or do I point it?
You push it and you'll see.
It'll show up, I'm hoping.
That's it.
Sierra? This is it. So you point by this button here, or you just point at the computer? Don't point up there, point there, there you go. This is Echo that runs along east-west. This is the new Sierra that connects to Delta Taxway. And what we're doing is increasing the grant we've already appropriated our funds for. This is just the state increasing grant.
Where's, may I ask, where's Foxtrot?
Foxtrot is right here.
We're getting ready to do some stuff, we did some stuff on that recently.
Say it again.
That was maybe at the Sun and Fun meeting the other day, I was just getting, I didn't know where Foxtrot.
Are there plans to expand Foxtrot?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Nope. Thank you.
Any other questions by commissioners? Any by the audience? It's a rule call vote. Commissioner McClellan?
Aye.
Yes.
Aye.
Aye.
Unanimously passes. Thank you very much. Item C1.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Item C1 is an amended and restated implementation agreement for the West Polk River Ford and Act for Well-Filled Project. As you recall, back in April of last year, the city commission approved the, this agreement providing for the construction of a 10 million gallons-per-day potable water, alternative water supply well-filled. The 10 million MGD is the ultimate capacity at build-out in 2045. This is a very expensive project, particularly once you get to that 2045 build-out of 10 million MGD. Costs are approximately $226 million, and with, after co-funding with Swift Mud, our costs are estimated at around $91 million for construction. Because of the amount of money involved, we're having to obviously work with financing partners, and those are Swift Mud, which would provide a 50% grant of the costs, WIFI alone through the U.S. Environmental Protection Agency, which would finance 48% of the costs, and then a state revolving fund loan through the State Department of Environmental Protection, which would cover the other 2%. It's important that all three of those financing partners are on board with the terms of this agreement. The Polk Regional Water Cooperative's Bonding Council and Financial Advisor have been in discussions with those financing sources, and as a result of that, they are recommending that the agreement that was entered into back in April be amended. The three main amendments that they are recommending are, one, the elimination of the 60% off-ramp, that was, that is under the current agreement. That off-ramp provided any of the member jurisdictions of this, the ability, once the 60% design plans are completed, to simply say, I don't want to be a part of this project and get out. They would have to pay for their costs up to that point, but then would not have to pay for any further costs. Swift Mud, in particular, has a condition of their 50% grant, saying that they will not agree to that. So they, in order to qualify for that co-funding through Swift Mud, we need to eliminate that. I would say that despite eliminating that off-ramp, because of the nature of the financing, I think there are still opportunities going forward to assess the reasonableness of this project. The WIFI loan is a loan that we only draw on as the project progresses. It's not something that we just take the whole amount out upfront. So we have the opportunity to assess this project and determine how much it's going to cost moving forward and make adjustments. The Swift Mud loan is a reimbursement, or it's not a loan, a grant, the Swift Mud grant is reimbursement. So again, that would not come into play and bind the city until the costs are expended. So there, the way things, the financing is structured, there is the opportunity to assess reasonableness in costs moving forward before we incur the expenses. So the fact that we're eliminating the 60% off-ramp, I don't think takes that away from the city, that ability to assess how this project is going and the costs. The second change that's being recommended is the creation of reserves for the project. That's coming more from the WIFI side of things. You know, the- That's that's coming more from the WIFI side of things. You know, WIFI and the EPA requires that this actually be an investment-grade project that is rated by the rating agencies. And so, in order to ensure that all the member jurisdictions that are going to participate in this project pay and that default does not cause problems, they're requiring that a reserve account be set up to cover any kind of short-term default by any of the member governments. The third main modification to this is a modification of the voting procedure under the existing agreement. It's a it's a it's purely a weighted voting process whereby each jurisdiction that participates in the project, they get the a vote that's weighted based on how much water they're going to draw from the project. Lakeland is going to draw 80% of the of the water from this project. So, our vote under the current system is 80% of the total vote. That allows Lakeland to quite frankly dominate this project, and that again caused the problem with Swift Mud that is insisting that this be a regional, truly regional project. So, the modified restated agreement provides for a hybrid. It still has that that weighted voting process, but also requires a majority of the participants to also agree to anything. So, and again, that that still allows Lakeland a lot of control over the project. We have a veto power, veto authority over anything that happens in this project because they have still have to have our 80% weighted vote for any decision that is made to move forward. Other than that, the water allocation table has been slightly modified to reflect the fact that Eagle Lake is not going to participating in this. That's the only accounted for .2 MGD or 2.5% of the original water allotment table. So, that's not a real significant change to this. But with those changes, this is recommended for your approval, Bill Andersons in the in the audience, if you have any technical questions.
I'd like Bill to come up. But just for the public, so when we're talking about an expenditure like this, and it's a collaborative effort that we're working with the other municipalities throughout Polk County, whereas we are talking about traffic and we're trying to retrofit that issue, this is some forethought that goes into water planning. And so, this kind of puts us on the front end so that we don't have to be reactionary later on. And that's why it gives great pause sometimes to the community when you see numbers that look like this. However, if we had done that, not we, but a collective body had paid attention to that several years ago with regard to transportation and road management, we probably wouldn't be all sitting in traffic. So, this is a preemptive, I think, option for us as the city of Lakeland and then also being partners with the other municipalities. So, Bill, could you just maybe speak to that a little bit about the front end of this planning, of what this is going to look like down the road and why this is important?
Absolutely. Thank you, Commissioner. For the record, Bill Anderson, Director of Water Utilities. We've been working cooperatively with the other municipalities here in the county since I think the formation agreement was 2016, looking at over 200 potential projects, narrowing it down to four really, and today we're looking at two of those essentially. But we originally started planning 50 years out, 50 years, a long way out for everybody's projected demands from a water perspective. And because of some of the issues, it's really hard to plan out that far, we kind of brought that back down to a 20-year planning horizon, much more doable, if you will. But even stating that while that's formerly a 20-year plan, we in the utility are still looking out 30, 40 years. And and based on projections that we have now, the Upper Florida that we rely on now would not suffice to meet those needs. So, that is why we're looking at this alternative water, an additional 10 million gallons for this project. Again, 2045 minimum, most likely it'll be beyond that as those projections and as the growth develops here in Lakeland. So, I'm very comfortable and confident that that will meet the needs of this community that far out.
And you compare to our current consumption?
So, right now, we're consuming, pumping about 22, 22 and a half million gallons a day. That permit is actually for 35 million gallons, 35.02. That expires in 2038. However, we may between now and then, if we start seeing any kind of environmental harm to minimum flows and levels in surrounding water bodies, to wetland impacts, any of those types of things could happen that could potentially reduce that permitted quantity. We don't know when we're going to see that. Again, right now, 22, 22 and a half million gallons a day, we may see those impacts at 25 million gallons a day, 28 million gallons a day. At that time, we're done. We're cut off. There could be further legislative efforts, such as the Central Florida Water Initiative that that came before us a couple of years ago. There could be other efforts like that. There could be an effort just to arbitrarily reduce that permitted allocation as well. So, from that perspective, we may need that this alternative water sooner rather than later. We don't know.
And the way this is managed is all the bodies of water are measured consistently all the time to watch any impacts that are regional to a spot as a as a result of this. That's why going to the lower aquifer gives us some protection because there isn't anybody drawing from the lower aquifer at the present time. And this essentially takes the water through reverse osmosis, giant reverse osmosis filters, and the sludge goes back down into the ground, and the water is treated and added back into our sources.
Correct.
All right, questions? Commissioner Reed.
Thank you. Not so much of a question, but a statement, I guess. Of the 10 million gallons, we're going to get approximately 8 million gallons because we're 80% owners, assuming it comes to full fruition.
At the full build-out, yes.
And and then for the general public that I hope they would know, but just, our water cooperative is is basically of all the cities in Polk County. And so, and if you want to look at it like a spider web, be one central water system that goes to all the cities and municipalities. So, at some point in time, if Frostproof needs water and we have water, we could basically turn on this bucket and Frostproof would have water. That's the that's the grand picture.
Essentially, yes, sir.
But it's a long way from fruition at this point. That gives that gives the general public a cohesive idea of what's going on within the cooperative, why we've, why Swift Mud asked us to form this, so we don't compete with one another. We're working as a cooperative, so everybody in Polk County will have water, and we can protect our water from Hillsborough and other counties like when they're taking the water off the Peace River, which really upsets me and stuff like that. But we'll, I'm not going to beat that dog again tonight.
And because Swift Mud is doing that with state funds, that's why they required us to take away that 60% walk away, because if they're investing 50% of their funds and then the project closes, they can redirect that money someplace else to people that they don't have that risk with, which is why we needed to do that as a cooperative in order to make it work so that we have the continuity to build this going forward together. All right, any other questions by commissioners? Yes, Commissioner McLeod.
Not a question, but to that point, Mayor, and that, Palmer, I appreciate you drawing that out, that there are, we have some options through the financing mechanisms as this moves forward. I did not, I wasn't aware of that or didn't realize that until you stated it very clearly. So, I appreciate that. And Bill, to you and your team, Palmer, to you and your team, you have put an incredible amount of work into this over the past two years, and water is such an important issue. And so, I know it's taken up a lot of time and resources to get this here today, and will continue as we're planning for 20, 30, 40-plus years into the future. So, we we really appreciate it as a commission, but as residents as well, to know that you're you're invested in this.
Thank you, sir. We've got a great team, not just here in the utility, but the other municipalities here through the Water Cooperative, and the partnership with the Water Management District has been outstanding, and also with the consulting team that's helping us through this process.
Commissioner Walker.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Davis, certainly, we're looking at this particular West Polk particular project agreement. But as I look at the list, you know, there's other cities, we're not here, but are they participating in the other the other projects that may come along in their future? Are they just just out of it completely?
No, I mean, there's there's other projects, and Bill could probably address that more than I could, but there are definitely other projects under evaluation, Peace River, for example, that we would not necessarily be interested in, but some other jurisdictions are.
Okay. But there are other projects at other cities in our county will be participating in, while we won't be participating in. Am I saying that correct?
That that is to be determined. Now, each individual city has the option to go it alone, if you will, and they could pursue projects on their own. Through the cooperative, however, there are four projects we're looking at, two that are on the table now, what we call the West Polk Lower Florida Aquifer Project, and the Southeast Lower Florida Aquifer. Those are moving along. There are other two projects that we're looking at. One is called the Peace Creek Project, and that is basically an aquifer recharge-type project. The other is called the Peace River Land Use Transition, which is basically a surface water project down south of Barto, close to Fort Meade. Those are moving along. They're not as far as long as the first two, and it remains to be seen whether we would participate in those or not.
Every city can make a choice for the amount that they want to participate in.
That's what I'm thinking, yes. Just want to make sure. Thank you.
And not to participate upfront is a penalty later.
Right.
Okay. All right, any other questions or comments? Any comments or questions by the audience? All right, this is a voice vote. Pardon?
Motion to approve.
Second.
That, it's one of the reasons we ought to really start discussion.
After you make your motion. That's right.
All right, so, there's a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same unanimously passes. Thank you. All right.
Very similarly to that, the the first agreement you just voted on is an amended and restated implementation agreement for the Southeast Well Field Project. This is a project down to the east of of Lake Wells, another alternative water supply lower Florida Act for Well Field Project. We are currently participating in that project to the tune of .1 million gallons per day, .1 MGD, which is a .80% of that project's total 2045 estimated water yield. Our our share of those costs are 2 million, a little, just just slightly worth of $2 million after co-funding by Swift Mud. Again, this is a very expensive project, so all the financing partners, again, are requesting the same changes that you just approved for the West Polk Project, and that's recommended for your approval.
No further approval.
Second.
Motion to approve in a second. Discussion, Commissioner Music.
Can I get a high level, I mean, really high level, so as we don't take too much time, on how the how the water is, you know, I can picture a well, right? You dig down, water comes up, and it's it's being used. We're talking about millions and millions of gallons. Is is it brought up, stored somewhere? Can you just kind of give us an overview of how our system works a little bit?
How this system will work, which is similar. So, for the West Polk, for example, at build-out, 2045 build-out, we're looking at 19 individual wells, and it all depends on that hydrology, 2,000 feet deep. How how quickly does that water move in that aquifer? Some areas in the county moves quicker. Over here, it happens and just moved a little bit slower, so it entails more wells per 1,000 gallons, if you will. But anyway, that water's drawn up, delivered, pumped to a water treatment plant that will be loco co-located right next to our Williams Water Plant. At that new plant, that water, as the mayor said, goes through a treatment process. The biggest piece of that is called reverse osmosis, very fine filtration, to remove all the particulates out of that water. It is then chlorinated, and then it'll come over to our Williams Plant and co-mingle with our Upper Florida Aquifer to be then distributed out into our system and through interconnects to the other project participants. Similar to the Southeast Well Field, basically the the identical process.
Same process.
The the hydrology over there is a little more open, so less number of wells per 1,000 gallons. However, a long way away, so a lot of transmission lines will have to be constructed to get that water from that plant to the project participants. And again, then through interconnects, it'll go through to the different project participants.
And you said you said this particular one was, how many wells?
For West Polk, we're looking at 19 individual wells. I believe it is.
So, it's 19 wells over how big of an area?
I'd have to look. I want to say they're pretty much in a line going westward. I want to say maybe a mile and a half to two miles off the top of my head.
Okay.
That is still under design, though, and looking at feasibility.
And those feed into one another. They'll go down to a main transition.
Correct. Correct, yes.
Commissioner Reed.
Thank you. And again, for those out in the audience, the Southeast Project, Palmer alluded to it, is $415 million. So, that's a that's a big, that's mostly the county. Recently, I've been reading quite a bit, do we fluoride our water?
I'm sorry, say that again.
Do we fluoride our water?
We do, yes. Yes, here in Lakeland.
I'm hearing a lot of bad publicity about fluoride. We, is that something we continue to do, or is that something we can eliminate? What's the deal?
We do continue to do that, and that was a, I believe, a recommendation from the federal government many, many years ago. I believe you have the authority to change that. We would, and I'd, we'd have to check, and I'd get with Palmer on that. I don't know if that's a public referendum or what that would look like to change that. But it is, again, highly recommended by the federal government, EPA, to fluorinate Florida, provide fluoride in the water, as well as the, what is it, ADA, American Dental Association highly recommends that as well.
Other questions from commissioners? Seeing none, any questions or comments from the public? All right, this is a voice vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. On to number three.
Number three is also related to PRWC Business. This is a Peace River Project, a proposed Peace River Project Interlocal Water Plant Consent Agreement. As as Mr. Anderson mentioned, one of the projects that the PRWC is evaluating is the Peace River Land Use Transmission Project, and that project may potentially result in in wellfields either within or very close to the city of Fort Meade's existing water service territory. So, they are very concerned about how that might affect their existing water use permit through Swift Mud. And so, what this, they've requested is is that all the members of the PRWC agree that one, they will not take any action with the Swift Mud in seeking a Swift Mud permit for this Peace River Project that would adversely affect, result in a reduction of their existing water use permit, and two, that if that does ultimately result, that anybody that chooses to participate in this project would make Fort Meade whole through providing them additional water through one of the all PRWC's alternative water supply projects.
Move to approve.
Second.
Oh, and got it. Motion to approve in a second. Discussion by commissioners? Handoff.
Yep, sorry.
Any by the audience? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion unanimously passes. There is no report from the Finance Director, and that brings us to the utility portion of the meeting, and thank you for Ramona for being ready so much earlier. So, Resolution one.
That is proposed Resolution number 22-012, a resolution relating to the electric utility, making findings, establishing a fuel charge for all customer classes for meters red on or after April 1st, 2022, amending time of day fuel charge for applicable rate classes, repealing Resolution 5733, provided in effective date.
No further.
Second.
Motion to approve in a second. Discussion by commissioners. Any discussion or questions by the audience? This is a roll call vote. Commissioner Walker?
Aye.
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 Yes.
Aye.
Unanimously passes. C1.
Good morning. Ramona Sariani for the Record City Attorney's Office. We have two items on the Utility Committee. The first item is an agreement with Midstate Industrial Maintenance LLC. This is for the steam turbine condenser repair for Larson's Unit 8. We've had some issues with the cooling water from Lake Parker leaking into the conditioned boiling water, which is causing a significant issue and requiring repair in order to maintain the the chemical composition and conditioning of the boiler water, as well as trying to mitigate and reduce the risk of pressure portfolios failures and also turbine blade corrosion in the unit. Based on the need for this, the city's purchasing department issued an invitation to bid in February 2022. We had four contractors that submitted bids. One of those contractors, Plasticore Inc., did not provide pricing on all portions of its bid, so they were deemed incomplete and they weren't considered for the bid. Midstate Industrial Maintenance LLC submitted a bid price of $518,911. You'll see that they had a low low bidder, which was Midstate. There is some differential between the low bid and the the other two bidders, significant difference. That can be attributed to the fact that each of the each of the vendors will be using subcontractors to perform the work, and so, based on the bid that was submitted, the subcontract, the vendors made assumptions about what that subcontracting price would be, and Midstate, Midstate's bid was significantly lower. So, that was, is So that is what you can attribute the difference in prices. However, if there is some additional cost that's involved that's above the threshold approval, it would come back to you in the form of approval of a change order, if that occurs. So upon your approval, the work is scheduled to be completed during Unit 8's spring outage. That's scheduled between March and May of this year. Midstate, along with its subcontractors, will provide all material, equipment, and labor for the work. Again, the total cost of the work is $518,911. It is included in Lakeland Electric's FY '22 budget, and this did receive unanimous approval from the Utility Committee at Friday's meeting as well.
So is there a motion to approve?
Move to approve.
Second.
And a second, and discussion by commissioners. Discussion, Commissioner Music.
Yes, Ramona, can you tell me how, just, how does the change order process work on this? Because obviously, we have a scope that we wanted everybody to bid off of.
Correct.
And then if there's some additional change orders, what's going to keep the cost from escalating beyond what we had hoped it would be with?
Well, typically, they do a pretty good job in terms of making sure when we receive a bid that all the scope of work is included in that. Sometimes, when they get into a unit or they start looking at additional repair work that they were not aware of, or in this case, we may have an issue with some of the price differential with the subcontractors. In that case, they would go, project staff would take a look at it. If there is additional cost, and again, it would be above the delegated authority of the city manager or department director, that process would work. Where the change order, if it was above $50,000, then that would have to come before you for approval, because what you're approving today is a total cost of $518,911.
So obviously, if you're going to open up something, you know, I can understand an unknown, right? I tell people that all the time. I'm not God or Superman. I can't see through there. But, you know, as far as labor increase or things like that, I mean, I would hope that would be dialed in pretty quickly.
That's already figured into the total cost of the agreement.
Okay, thank you.
So you're concerned about the limits that are within?
Correct.
The definitions, right?
Yes.
Any other questions, comments? Any by the audience? Any comments you'd like to? All those, oh, wait a minute, sorry. This is a?
Voice vote.
Voice vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same. Unanimously passes.
The second item we have is a change order, number two, with Siemens Energy. This is for MGT2 hot gas path outage work. If you recall, the city commission approved work for the fall 2021 outage back in July of 2021. And at that time, you approved a total cost of $5,457,753. As in the course to Commissioner Music's point, as they opened up the unit and they discovered that additional work was necessary. So in that sense, change order number one was brought to you November 1st, 2021 at a cost of $231,855. Again, after reviewing some of the other items during the repair that was taking place during the fall outage, and while the unit was disassembled, it was determined that additional work, again, needed to be provided. Time is of the essence to try to develop that scope of work and go ahead and proceed with that work. The city's purchasing department did approve Siemens because they're the original equipment manufacturer as a sole source supplier of these items and additional work. And you'll see the additional scopes of work are listed. And the total cost of that for change order number two is $1,771,484.22. The total cost of the work is included in Lakeland Electric's FY '22 budget.
Move for approval.
Second. Motion to approve and a second discussion by commissioners. Any discussion or questions by the audience? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same. Unanimously passes. Thank you very much for that. That takes us through the utility to the audience portion of the meeting. And so this is a time that any audience member that would like to share any insights or comments can do so. Just state your name, and you're limited at five minutes. You can come to the front center one if you'd like. The Bs are for you.
A little bit louder. Good morning. God bless America. Dear Commissioners and Mayor Mutz, my name is Alfredo Anthony Gomar Jr. I also go by Alfredo Gomar Martinez, Menelik Hannibal, Lord Baltimore, Don Cholo, Picasso, and Ferretini Alfredo. Also, he who writes too much, named thanks to the children of St. Joseph's Indian School in North Dakota and the renegade in Lakeland. I would respectfully request that you, Mayor Mutz and the Commissioners, consider requesting that the city attorney draft a letter to Charlie Chris expressing your support for him as governor and adding that he considered picking former Mayor Galfields as his running mate. Charlie Chris has been a Republican, a Democrat, and an Independent, the perfect combination and mixture. And he is an environmentalist and in favor of a woman's right to choose. I say, this is, and also, he supports the gay community and transgender community. I say, let's support Charlie Chris for governor and Galfields for lieutenant governor. Thank you for allowing me to speak.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate that.
Good morning, still. I'm Linda Bagley Wiggs.
Wait three minutes.
I live at 4602 Highlands Place Drive. I have great respect for the mayor and the city commissioners. I know how much work you do. I see it. I've seen it in the agenda study last Friday. I've seen it today. I've seen how much you get the information that you need. And I also know that there is some information that I have delved into since I went to the agenda study, the planning and zoning meeting on February 15th. I have delved into in great depth. The thing that does concern me, which is the Lake Miriam Apartments. I know this isn't a public hearing, and this isn't time for a public hearing, but I have something to say. I know that you have to rely on the law. It was stated today, you cannot expect that you are able to vote if the state of Florida says you can't use traffic as an excuse. I know that you need the law in order to have reasonings to vote, and you will be thinking about this a lot for the next two weeks. Item four, the proposed development is consistent with the TOC. The proposal is being force-fit into the TOC. They are building a compact apartment complex consistent with the TOC. Compact, meaning, is this a countdown? Or have I gone three minutes already? Oh, good. The apartment project is not easily, they, I'm sorry, I lost my place. I got all. This compact, meaning high density. There are a lot of situations where high density makes sense in providing services with fire and police and shopping. This is not one of those instances. This apartment project is at the city edge on a county road in an area that was suburban or is suburban and was rural. This apartment project is not easily accessible, I would maintain, by the Lakeland Police and Fire. It is a congested road. It is on a narrow access road, and it will be a gated community with three or four stories in elevators. I contend that it is not safe to add another 500 citizens compacted on the eight acres in which they will build six buildings. This complex will not have required green space. They will plow down the trees to make space for the wet storm water pond that must be fenced in and will be unsightly. Are there enough parking places for the 244 units? 1.7 parking places per unit is required. As far as pedestrian oriented, as quoted in the TOC, consistent with the TOC, quote, "pedestrian oriented and designed to promote walking and biking in nearby retail." Well, where do you walk when you go biking? Or where do you walk from your neighborhood? Would you walk to the hair salon? Would you walk to get a pedicure? Maybe to the restaurants? But is it secure at night to walk to the restaurants? We know Florida is too hot or rainy for eight months. Now, as far as biking, would you send your kids out to bike in this neighborhood? The neighborhood is being, the neighborhood being the two-lane access road from Lake Miriam Drive into Lake Miriam Square. Would you want them to ride their bikes on the sidewalk of Lake Miriam or on the sidewalk of Florida Avenue or in the Lake Miriam Square parking lot, where they are proposing that they send apartment traffic north to get on North Florida Avenue through the parking lot? Also, the design, quote, "promotes internal trip capture, reducing overall number of vehicle trips." I would love to see the data on that. I'd love to see the study on that. How many trips are going to be captured? Because the one place that captures all of us, sometimes many times during the week, is Publix. We are all going in there. But how many other places in Lake Miriam Square capture people so they'll have all their shopping needs taken care of? I know housing is a priority with City of Lakeland. We've done a lot of new apartments and affordable living spaces and housing. This particular one is a bad development for the City of Lakeland. And it's bad for the people who are going to be living there, the ones that are being sold on walkability and bikeability. This is not good for them. Will they want to walk across the access road to get to the one amenity, the pool? And when they have to tear down the trees that are on that lot, will they then be loving the green space, which will be a water pond that the SWIFTMUD requires to be fenced in? I see the mic timer's over. Vote no. Deny the change of zoning while you still have a choice.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Mayor, just to go back to what I said before, we're going to have a public hearing on this on March 21st. And just to make sure that your comments are a part of the record of that public hearing, you'll need to restate those on the 21st. The public hearing on this will be on the 21st, so to make sure that your comments are a part of that public record that will serve the legal foundation for any decisions that the city commission makes, those comments would need to be made again on the 21st.
Come back.
Because this is not a public hearing. So.
Okay.
Just so that it's on the record in that hearing.
All right. It is being recorded, however, right?
Right, but it doesn't apply to the decision, which is the.
Okay. But you all can hear this, though, right?
Yes. Yeah, we're fine.
I guess the distinction I'm making is that there's going to be, you know, potentially legal appeals, and there's going to be a record created on the 21st.
I'll be happy to be there.
Whatever is in that record is what the appeal would be based on, and today is not that. So if you want those considered?
I understand. Thank you. Attorney Davis. And there, I have three or five more minutes, much more stuff to talk about in the next meeting.
We'll see you then.
Thank you. Any other audience members for participating in comments? Come on down, please, sir.
And just to tie into what you just mentioned, more than likely, there would be a time limit on individual speakers on the 21st. Typically, an exception is made for a spokesperson for a group, so if you have a spokesperson, that may allow a spokesperson to be able to make a more comprehensive presentation.
Right, so the point being there that if you have a spokesperson, they can make a longer comment, and then it isn't repeated by the other people that would make individual comments thereafter. Yeah, come.
Sorry, 6:20. Should I just go ahead and save my breath till the next meeting? Because I've got your.
No, I'd like to hear it now. We'd like to hear it, but it just, to the city attorney's point, if they sue us later for whatever we decide, it has to be recorded in that meeting as well. But we're going to be hearing emails and from people all along the way.
I get it.
We'd love to hear what you say.
If you've got something irrelevant, it may make us think about it for a couple of weeks.
One thing I didn't want to address if I could have your time was the 15-foot buffer zone is cutting halfway through my driveway. My family has owned this property and maintained the property for the last 40 years on the eastern side of the chain link fence. And the proposed buffer zone is literally cutting my driveway in half to where I'm not going to be able to back out of my garage. I mean, if you look at the property lines where it's at, and this property was acquired directly from Publix in May of 1982. Just kind of curious, I haven't really seen too many plans, too much, too many plans on how they're going to address me. I mean, there's a lot of information on how to.
So I would encourage their attorney to get in touch with you and talk about those kinds of things as they take a look at the plans.
All right.
And your name?
Your name?
Your name for the record?
Christopher Oliver.
Last name?
Christopher Oliver. Oliver?
Thank you.
Oh, thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor?
Yes.
Is that something our staff could provide clarity on? If there's.
Should.
I would encourage somebody, Brian, I see you out there. If you could connect with him and just provide that information. There may be something that's missing there, I don't know. But I think that would be helpful.
Okay.
Thank you.
Any other comments from the public? I think I saw someone else standing up. Yes, come on down, sir, please, if you'd like.
Hi, my name's Joey Tmundong. I retired from Lakeland Electric a little over three years ago. Just a quick commercial, it's a little heavy. I'd like to invite you guys out to the Power Academy Open House. It's going to happen Tuesday between 5:00 to 7:00. I forgot what day it is. I'm retired, I only count to seven. I start over on the day again, but it's next Tuesday. I think it's the 15th. The principal and Ms. Osborne will have the students here probably the next meeting. I think they come once a year to do the graduation course and stuff. With COVID and all the other things, there's been a drawdown of maybe attention. You can ask, you know, when's the last time I have been to Lakeland Electric Power Academy? Or any of the other things that go with that. And I will defer to Commissioner Walker for the quality of the food and stuff that has the stuff that you can go through there. But yeah, if you can work it into your schedule, 5:00 to 7:00, next Tuesday, we're getting the band back together.
Great, thank you very much.
Always a good, always a good, a good eating. I feel like that, but a good time to share.
Obviously, they have a reputation for that there.
Well, Joey does a good job.
Well, Joey does a good job. He's done a good job for the last few years with that. And of course, just seeing the students, they're part of the Power Academy, and getting to share with them and see what skill sets they have developed and how they move forward and even becoming, hopefully, you know, employed with Lakeland Electric as they move on or other electrical entities throughout the state or outside of state.
It's fascinating.
Very well done. Thank you, Joey.
Well, I've been helping for you. I've got retired.
I know, but you're still coming around.
Great. Okay, Commissioner Reed.
Bill, thank you. I see Teresa's here for me. Would you come up, please? I think.
I have a quick question.
Yes, you can. If you come up to the mic, please. Sorry. And you can ask it for five minutes, if you wish.
No, I just have a quick question. Because we keep hearing, my name is Kim Daniels. I live at 5315 Woodhaven Lane. We keep hearing about the failed road and how that is one of the main impediments that affects your vote. I was just curious, how do you define failed road as it relates to the development that we're seeing?
So that will, that'll be part of it? Because there's a whole concurrency study of traffic.
I understand that, but is there some sort of concise definition of failed road that we could probably just address? No?
FDOT.
Okay, thank you.
That agreed.
Cheryl, did you get her name?
I did not get her name.
What was your first name?
Kim Daniels.
Kim Daniels, yeah.
Yes, sir.
Teresa, thank you for coming up. I was going to ask this question earlier when Stephanie asked her question of Chuck. But in the case of what Chuck was going over about traffic and concurrency and stuff like that, what happens if we vote no?
If you vote no on the application? On the development? Or on any hypothetical?
Really, really not get into that today.
We'll do this next.
Well, I think there's ramifications. Again, there's going to be a repeal process and stuff like that. I just wanted a brief synopsis there, but that's irrelevant, I guess. We'll have to address it in. But can you briefly explain the legislature just passed some new laws about right to use and property rights? Maybe, Barbara, you're the better person to address that.
The question again is?
The legislature came down with some new laws about some property rights and right to use stuff.
What's pending for the legislature this year?
I think it was actually last year, I think.
Last year?
It was last year.
It resulted in us amending or in you amending the comprehensive plan to include a specific property rights element. From what I recall of the legislation, it was very general in nature and really just reinforced what local laws and also the state law also have in place previously for property rights.
Right. What happened last year, really, I don't think has any substantive effect on the public hearing coming up. It's more symbolic, quite frankly.
They have firmed up the right to use laws. I mean, they've made those a lot more strenuous for giving more likes to the property owner.
I mean, the Burt Harris Act is probably the most significant of those, and that's been around for quite a while, since 1995.
I think they modified something. I don't know if they did it or not, but I thought so. I'm sorry.
All right, so things the commissioners would like to share. Commissioner McCarley.
All those ends.
Yes.
I just, I wasn't able, because I missed the last meeting, to just sort of give congratulations and shout out to Team Conrad. I know that we have a going-away thing for him coming up, but he just did a remarkable job at the airport. And so I just wanted to say that publicly, that I appreciated all the work that he did and continues to do. I'm excited that he's staying at Sun 'n Fun early. I think that's a coup for Lakeland. So congrats to him, and I appreciate all of his service. And I have a question that just, it can be dealt with later. But I just want to see the economic impact of MLB's holdout on our community, what that looks like for spring training and numbers.
Well, that's in total.
I mean, for the City of Lakeland, like Parks and Rec, what does that hit to us?
For us?
Just to us?
Sorry, talking to the Congress.
No, sorry. Just the economic impact to us from Parks and Rec.
To the city.
Yeah, thanks.
I mean, the city organization is what we're saying.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
The direct measurable.
I was ready to go to a game. So I'm just sort of wondering.
Right. Any other commissioners with items to share? Commissioner Walker.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just want to make sure my colleagues are aware. We had a meeting on February 21st, the Gang Task Force Committee, and we went to what we call the next evolution, where we, in some respect, dissolved and named especially Gang Task Force to now what we call the Community Engagement Task Force. And particularly so because we wanted to make sure we get the connotation of the name gangs and that kind of thing out of the public view, simply because, you know, we still know there are viable gangs in some respect in our city, but not to the point where we dealt with so many years back. And of course, still keeping our fingers on the pulse to keep that, what we call suppression, suppress as much of the activity as we can. But three things, of course, that came out of that meeting as we kind of transitioned now from Gang Task Force to Community Engagement Task Force is LPD, of course, under PAL will now have the direction of what will continue to happen in some respects as far as youth development, community outreach. Because we still would do the community outreach stuff that has been, has been done all along. And thankfully, you know, through what Pastor Cooper's done, Mike Cooper that is, with the Dream Center and those particular churches, they have, you know, have already, I guess, adopted particular neighborhoods in our Lakeland community. But certainly, public safety being number one. So I want to make sure you all knew that, as has come about, Captain Marvin Tarver will be the point person through, I guess, under PAL with this particular initiative now as referred to as being Community Engagement Task Force. And a number, we've asked a number of those members from the Gang Task Force to join with this new task force to be of support, especially, again, with youth development for mentoring and that kind of thing, which will come about. Now, the first meeting of that new group has not been set yet, that I know of, I'm sure, with some things that transitioning from what we did for a number of years. And Captain Tarver, getting his feel or how, the direction he wants to make, that will be, I'm sure, in very near future, a new, I mean, a first meeting of this new Community Engagement Task Force. Still, again, you will still have the community outreach. You still will have the youth involvement where it comes to Refuse to Lose. They even changed their name now. I forget the name. It's not Refuse to Lose. It's still RTL, but it's more directed toward.
Rise to Lead.
Rise to Lead. Thank you, ma'am. Rise to Lead. A good, you know, person that has the clerk title. So I want to make sure you all knew that. And especially so. We know this is the last week of session.
Lori, Lori.
And I was not able to be on the call, which is the last Monday morning call that a number of us have participated in over these past few weeks, a number of weeks. But I do want to thank, you know, our local delegation for, I say for, some things they've done to help support protection of local decision-making authority in some respect. So those are some bills, especially with the sovereign immunity bill and others that would have really hit us a little hard. But I think we came, we'll be coming out unscathed, hopefully, as we see what the final actions would be as we move forward here this week. So I'll make sure you all knew that. And you all been getting the weekly, you know, reports that come from David Schell, our lobbyist. And thank you again to the committee, myself alone with Commissioner McCarley. And I think Chairman McCloud, Commissioner McCloud, and thank you for your support that you do as well with legal citizen and your responsibilities that you've taken on with that as well. So thank you all. Appreciate it.
Thank you for your leadership, sir. Very much. Commissioner Reed.
Thank you. Tomorrow, at the Flight Academy, there's an open house starting at 10 o'clock. For those of you that want to go out and see the museum and see what high school students learn about mechanics and get their airplane flying certificate. It's at Sun 'n Fun, out in the Sun 'n Sun Center. I encourage you to go out there. You will see some fantastic stuff going on. This past weekend, if you didn't go to the basketball tournament, the week before, we had the girls' basketball tournament. And then this past weekend, we finished up the boys' state high school tournament. Some, I like basketball. I went to a lot of the games. There's some fantastic players that you'll see in colleges. I saw some guys that are going to Kansas, Florida, Ohio State. All of them committed, a lot of juniors there, some 6'10" high school boys that are, there's big teams. And then last but not least, if you're traveling to Tampa, beware, it is Strawberry Festival, and you will be in a traffic jam. So it's inevitable. So plan accordingly. Going and probably coming from Tampa would be your biggest issue.
Works both ways.
Yeah.
All right. And now we would love to hear from you, Commissioner McCloud.
Thank you, Mayor. Very quickly, I just, I wanted to publicly congratulate the men and women of the police department who were recognized on Friday. Commissioner Walker, Assistant City Manager Emily Cologne and I attended the annual award ceremony, and it's.
Isn't that encouraging?
It is. It's powerful to hear the stories. And just, I walk away with more respect and admiration for what they do every day. And it was inspiring to sit there and listen to the recognition. And so I would love to have the Officers of the Year recognized at one of these meetings sometime soon.
Yes, great.
Shout out to them. It was a great, great ceremony.
Very good.
I see your city manager's pen at work, so good job. Anything else? Commissioner McCloud?
Thank you. So I'm looking back at my co-conspirator in legislative and regulatory issues, Cindy Clemens in the back. We enjoyed a great trip to DC, our first fly-in in a couple of years with COVID. And as part of my responsibilities on the APPA PMC, we're supposed to fly in twice a year and advocate on behalf of public power. So I did just want to give a couple of highlights, you know, to my colleagues so you know, you know what is kind of part of this job. I think probably a highlight for us was to be able to, you know, meet with our, you know, esteemed colleague from the commission, Congressman, now Congressman Scott Franklin. And it's just really gratifying to see when you have someone from local government sitting on a nonpartisan board who goes to DC. And, you know, and we're all hoping that people will cross the aisle and shake hands and work together to get something done. You see that when you've come from this local governing board, how we do that every day. And so, you know, it is a little disheartening to hear that, you know, he's trying with some of those efforts on, you know, like in a military committee, you know, kind of starting in a place that would seem, you know, everyone could agree, you know, on things, you know, maybe with regard to military. But nonetheless, a very difficult challenge.